We're getting the regular meeting of the City Commission and I'll take real call please.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Roth?
Here.
Commissioner Maum?
Here.
Commissioner Pauli?
Here.
Mayor Neely?
Here. Incidentally, this is the commission date May 1st, May Day, and with that, would you please join me in the flag salute?
My flag salute is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We've got several activities here of ceremonies, proclamations, and presentations, and what we're going to have is an annual report from the library board. We have Don, I'm sorry, Don Wright making the presentation. Thank you. Hey, back there.
Well, thank you Mayor Neely. Members of the City Commission, put this down here, there we go. It is my privilege to tell you about the many wonderful things happening in our community because of the Oregon City Public Library, and with me today is Maureen Thompson Cole of Le Coromole, our illustrious librarian who is really a great asset to this city. I don't know if you know that, but anyhow, I'm going to go on here. Try to stay on script. There we go. I'm sure you are aware of some of them, and several are your quest to find the right place for a new chapter in the library's century-long record of service and education to our population. When the opportunity arose two years ago to apply for a seat on the library board, I did not hesitate. My enthusiasm of my interview has not waned. I believe in this institution and I want it to succeed, so do all the board members and certainly the library staff. Let me also compliment you on the selection of our head librarian, Maureen Thompson Cole, who epitomizes the finest qualities of a caring, knowledgeable professional who loves, don't smile too much, who loves to help people learn, entertain themselves, and see the possibilities of the world. While that is the case in our library, believe me, I know, it is not the case in every library. With Mo's help, I'll try to answer your questions after this brief synopsis of what's been going on. Last January, your library board was required to have nearly monthly executive sessions in order to discuss land purchase opportunities, possible land acquisitions, and general concept planning for the eventual new and/or expanded library facilities in this city. As of April 2013, these sessions, though less frequent, are still ongoing as new opportunities present themselves. As board chairman, I would not say we are discouraged at the progress of this most significant job we have undertaken, but we have made progress making the underpinnings of the things we will be using when we get the new building viable, and one of those I'll talk about in just a minute. Two years ago, when I joined the board, there was a timeline in place that was based on the assumption that Oregon City landowners would be jumped at the chance that such a facility would be built on their land, purchased at a fair price. The reality of that is something else. Anyhow, in February, we continue these discussions, and we took an active role in reviewing the Oregon City Library's budget. Now, while we realize that we are an advisory group, the collective talent and experience on our board in reviewing just such financial planning documents has, I feel, been a help to our librarian, who is part of city staff, but has a large say in how funds are allocated in the library's efforts to serve the community. She is forthright in the positives and negatives of the budgeting process, but she tells us her reasoning and her best guess on what may happen in the city's final budget draft. We are aware of your continuing financial and in-kind support of the library, and we appreciate it. Mo is frugal, I would point out, and is saving some of the library's unspent funds for the eventual creation and of a new and/or expanded library system here. We're pleased with her efforts. February of 2000, also started a long series of library programs, again initiated by Mo and her colleagues to bring up-to-date, interesting programs to citizens of all ages. That month was a unique presentation of the author of Robo-Pocalypse with really creepy robo-sculptures all around the library by local artists. I loved it personally. Since then, we have had music, wee nights for young people, library-to-go classes, bestselling authors, Cheryl Strayed, poets, and the list goes on. In all, about 204 different programs have so far been offered by this busy staff, 169 for children, 11 for young adults, and 24 adults, often being shoehorned into the tiny little Carnegie space, or in the case of very popular movie nights, in the larger auditorium at the Pioneer Center. Another nice thing is that Mo is integrating the resources of the neighborhood into this programming, and it's really going over very well. About 300 people have attended such diverse films as an explanation of the importance of dirt.
Yeah.
No, it was very popular. In April, we began discussion, that's going to be my big punchline, I'm sorry. In April, we began discussion about guiding principles for the library that has led to the adoption of the strategic plan, of which you now have a copy. This also was the beginning of our road trips to other libraries, new and old, to see what they have done and how they did it. A partial list includes Estacada, Sandy, Tuolton, Sunnyside, Wilsonville, McMinnville, Hillsborough, several Multnomah library system branches, as well as individual trips by individual board members to Newport, Albany, Lebanon. And rather than the visits being just about the physical structure, although that was the reason we made the effort, we discovered the side benefit of learning what good ideas for those libraries didn't really work out so well, and what ones they didn't anticipate all of a sudden just came organically to them. It was a very interesting trip, and we plan to do some more as we get along here. May was filled with more library trips and continued conversation about guiding principles, ongoing survey. The process of the guiding principles was sufficiently complex to require a facilitated work session in June with Jim Loffler over here, and I think that was very successful. It was extremely productive in bringing our minds into unity on what we should be doing. And in case of this, I urge you to read that because it's a wonderful document. It's a distillation of what we're going to be doing for the next, how many years?
Five.
Five years, so we'll be looking at it again.
Yeah, every year we'll look at it.
But it's really right on. The success of that session led us to believe we need to learn how to coordinate the various library support in the community once we get into the campaign mode for a new facility and expanded facilities. To coordinate all the efforts of people who want a library, sounds like, well, everybody wants a library. Well, coordination is what is going to take, and all the horses pulling the same string. July, August, and September found us more relaxed, but still hammering away an executive session on possible library sites, including revisiting some that were rejected early on when a better prospect seemed to be looming someplace. September, October, and November sessions were filled with more discussion of library policy, the strategic plan. We worked on this for five months, I think it was.
Good long time.
Yeah, and the library's collection policy, which means, do we keep buying books when we have no shelf space and people are flocking to electronic media? These are questions we're debating. That sounds funny, but it is very serious consideration. Hillsborough's newish library, get this, has 80,000 square feet of space. 80,000 square feet. I don't understand that, but it has something to do with Intel, I'm thinking, but 80,000 square feet. Well, that's good for them. I don't know if we could do that over here, but we'd be happy with 20, 25, 30,000. Give that to us, we'll build a nice library. Our needs are immediate. They have been immediate for a number of years, but more modest, where you can see that some communities have gone all-in in providing a library for the future, not just the now. In those months, we began the process of advertising for new board members to replace those who must retire by city code. Those interviews were held at the Pioneer Center. And in December, we met an executive session with this commission to have you bring us up-to-date on city negotiations that may affect our library decisions. It was a very productive meeting, I thought. I hope this is vague enough for the public record, by the way. With all of this brief summary and comment, I and Mo welcome any questions you may have, and we'll try to answer them.
Just in case, nobody knows it, but one of his interests is being a thespian.
Right, right.
The City Commission, as one of its goals this year, actually committed itself to finding a site, and we're going to do it. And we're going to do it, of course, in conjunction with the library board's recommendation. I want to, first of all, before we take questions and discussions, compliment on the library board and the tremendous work you have done.
Thank you.
It makes a great deal of difference to me because I appointed most of you. And the other thing, you're giving this commission the credit of aiding in the selection of our library director. How many years have you been here?
Three and a half.
So I think there might have been two of us that can accept that praise. Thank you. Anyway.
But the others of us, thank you all for the years.
Anyway, with that, are there any questions? Your comments?
I thought it was very enlightening. Thank you.
Yes.
And we look forward to hearing more, and I really want to hear about electronics and how that's affecting our library, so I'm very excited to hear about that. Thank you.
Well, you know, just for a moment, and our space is limited, but, you know, we do have access to the Internet and so forth, based on library terminals and so forth. Every time I've gone in there, they seem to be fully occupied. I mean, it is a service that the city does render. Not everybody in their home has that kind of access.
Yeah, no, we have people flocking there every day, like, as soon as we open, to use the computers. That's all they come there for, some of them.
So there's not, there's no antagonism there between electronic media and the paper media, or whatever you refer to it as?
Oh, we are a profession of multi-formats. That's how we've been for years. So we try just to balance everything and provide what our community needs. So you'll see little differences in different communities depending on the needs of the community, but we try and balance that. So we have a lot of Wi-Fi users, but we have a lot of book readers, you know, and we have a lot of people that do all of the above. So that's what I see a lot of, is people that have their Kindle for vacation or for certain reading conditions, they still love to check out books, they use Wi-Fi, all of the above.
That's what I was thinking, was Kindle and what's the other one? The Nook?
The Nook, yeah. I have a question about that, because I do almost all Nook now, but, like, there's one book I'm on the waitlist for, I'm 105th on the list. Do you get lists that long on real books, on regular books?
Yes, longer, 362.
Oh.
Yeah. No, we try and buy multiple copies, and we also have multiple copies of ebook stuff too, because even though it's an ebook, it's the ratio is still one-to-one, you know, one used to one patron at a time, even though that kind of doesn't make sense. Publisher-wise, it does, so, yeah.
That whole field of how electronic publishing is regulated is really weird, but it's changing, you know, so we watch that.
Changes daily, actually. We got some good news today.
Oh, good.
Of another problem, sure, that added on, that they'll sell to libraries now.
Actually, I was in there a while back, and I was on the list for a book, way, way down the list, but I saw the book sitting there, and I thought, oh, I bet I could check that out.
Yeah.
And it works. I need it now.
You open to the possibilities, yeah.
And just for your consideration, there's a new library in Texas that has no books in it.
Oh, really?
It's all electronic.
Oh, my goodness.
So we think about those things, too.
We think about them.
Think about them.
Thank you.
I think it's a real testament to the library program that even in the smaller footprint, we're still 80% of the circulation that we were in a much larger footprint.
Yeah, our statistics are steady in that regards, too.
That's pretty amazing.
We can thank the patrons of Oregon City, too, for sticking with us.
Absolutely. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we'll go to another department of service and have Lieutenant Bill Clark give us our downtown parking update. Welcome.
Did you just shine your badge?
Is it blinding it?
Yeah. Oh, just blinding.
Sure it's the badge?
That was good. That was good.
Thank you. I'm Bill Clark, Lieutenant with the Oregon City Police Department. I currently supervise code enforcement and parking, so I was asked to come and give you a brief snapshot of how parking's doing since the downtown construction's completed. Just going to throw a bunch of numbers at you, and if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them. No means the parking goober, but I'm learning quickly. The total number of parking stalls we have downtown is 533. 93 of those stalls are in the municipal lot down there by 13th and Main. 166 of those stalls are permit parking, which leaves 274 for on-street metered and paystation parking. The parking capacity actually increased by 10 spots with the new parallel parking that we did after the Main Street construction. So moving from diagonal parking to parallel parking actually increased 10 spots, and that's based off of 21-foot stalls is how we measured that. Most of the parking stalls are two-hour metered in the core. We do have some four-hour metered that are outside the core, and of course, we have the permit parking that's also outside of the core. When I refer to the core, that's Main Street from 10th to 7th. We kind of consider it the core because of the hub of the courthouse. Of course, as you know, there's several private lots that provide parking down there as well. Topic of conversation has been handicap parking and the accessibility of those stalls. Prior to the construction, we had nine handicap accessible stalls. We added two after the construction, and we also located one for the safety of the user. We moved it from mid-block back to the end of the block at 9th and Main so that the curb cutout can give some protection there. And the two that we added are at 8th and Main and at 6th and Main, again, using the curb for the cutout and the safety of the user there.
Again, what is the total?
Eleven.
Eleven, thank you.
And those two you added would be considered in the core?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, 6 is a block out of the core, so.
Okay.
But then the one on 9th Street, we just moved back half a block for, again, for that buffer, that safety buffer.
Good.
So 11 total is what we provide downtown.
And how many were there before the construction of handicap? Do you have those numbers?
Nine.
Nine.
Yes, we only added two.
Okay.
Yeah. Got some stats on the usage and circulation. The new paystations are fairly handy. They give us a lot of data that we can collect for this type of a purpose. We have 13 paystations downtown. We did some data collection from January to April 2013. Just using the paystations, we had an average of 7,000 users. So that's just the paystations. That's not the meters or the free parking on 99. That's just the data we can collect. So an average of 7,000 users per month. The municipal lot down at 13th and Main, the average user there, there's 900 per month on average down at the municipal lot, so there's 900 there that use that and walk into the core. I'm assuming they're walking into the core. The 8th Street is the most heavy-used paystation, and it's at 1,945. So just 8th Street itself is just one side, is the east side of the street is the most heavily-used paystation that we have. So if you look at the totality of the parking stalls, the four-month average for a percentage is 42% for the on-street parking, and the core is at 74%. So we literally do a stall count several times a month, several times a week, and the average is 42% for the on-street parking, and the core is 74%. The parking study indicates if you get to 85%, then you need to, you know, obviously take a look at things and reconsider what's going on. So with that, I would indicate that following the parking plan and the parking study, things are going fairly well down there. The circulation is fairly well. If you want to talk about parking enforcement, we don't really have good data three years ago prior to the construction, but currently, our parking enforcement employees are only writing 35 citations a day and giving three warnings a day. We know, just from not having any stats, but we know that previous parking enforcement officer wrote close to 100 a day. So again, the education that we've done and the signage that we've done to educate people and try to clean things up appears to be working based on only 35 citations a day.
Could you repeat those numbers? Was it?
Yeah, prior to the construction, it's guessed that about 100 citations were written a day, parking citations. And we have good data now that says we only write 35 per day on average, and three warnings.
Thank you.
You bet. And again, contributing that to the success of the construction, the paystations, and the signage, and as well as the parking staff doing a quality job down there. And they're there routinely to help people as well as, you know, enforce, they're there to help people manipulate the paystations and direct people to the meters and municipal lot and that sort of thing. So that's.
So they're not just hiding on the corner waiting for you to?
Yeah, they're not hiding on the corner to jump out and get you and then click zero and start flashing.
They seem to walk around a lot and cover a lot of territory.
Yeah.
Yeah. We asked one of them, the female that you may see down there walking around, her name's Trina, we asked her to be down there at 8 o'clock in the morning to help people navigate and work on the paystations, make sure they're all operable, as well as help them out if they need help.
Okay, that's great. And then do you guys meet with the business owners regularly about parking, or?
Yeah, I meet with Lloyd Party regularly. I meet with some businesses down there, I don't want to name them out, but I do meet with them.
Okay.
And we get feedback from them. That's why we got the four-hour meters, because we got some feedback from some business owners saying, you know, I got some customers that want to come in and patronize their location as well as go have lunch. Two hours isn't enough, so we now offer 20 four-stalls down there.
Great. Thank you.
They're outside the core, but they are still four-hour stalls.
Yeah, I actually, other than getting complaints about paying $20 tickets, I get, one thing that some people have asked me is why do we have some block areas there that are not, in fact, striped in terms of the parking space?
Is that the parallel parking?
Yes.
I think it's just parallel parking, it's not striped. I wasn't involved in these conversations, so it's just what I've been told. They made that decision so that you weren't limited, because ODOT does everything off a 24-foot stall. And so you get these Priuses that are only, you know, 18 feet, so we didn't want to limit the amount of cars on a particular row with 24-foot stalls. So the idea was maybe we can pack in more than, then you can mark off 20-foot stalls. Does that make sense?
Could I make a request, if you are able to do so, perhaps to actually do some counts of cars on the blocks immediately adjacent to them, and the ones where there is no striping, and see if, in fact, we're getting more cars where we don't have the striping. Some people are a little bit nervous about how they space themselves.
Totally, yeah.
And I don't know if, how the effect would go. So if you could, in some way, see if you can work out some monitoring of that.
Yeah, again, I wasn't involved in those conversations, but I know that some engineers were, and that's what they came up with.
I remember part of that. I wasn't necessarily involved in that, but the difference is, you know, do you stripe it for Prius, or do you stripe it for a Ford pickup? So, you know, there was, and in a lot of places, they're just not marked, so, not necessarily around here, but in a lot of other agencies. So there was a fair amount of discussion when, about, you know, what's current practice? What makes sense? Are people good enough drivers to figure out, you know, those spacing limits? And, you know, I think the consensus was, yeah.
I don't know.
If you do stripe it, ODOT mandates 24 feet, so a lot of wasted space. I know that for a fact. And we did a bunch of averages on vehicles just in a parking lot, and came up with 21 feet to kind of use as a rule of thumb.
Okay.
This is great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike, for getting this done. Perfect, thanks.
Well, this is one of the moments that I really enjoy, is to actually have a proclamation here.
Beautiful.
This is a proclamation for Historic Preservation Month, May 2013. Whereas Historic Preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas Historic Preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. And whereas save, celebrate is the theme for the National Preservation Month 2013, co-sponsored by the City of Oregon City and the National Trust for Historic Preservation, now therefore I, Doug Neely, Mayor of Oregon City, do proclaim May 2013 as National Preservation Month and call upon the people of Oregon City to join their fellow citizens across the land in recognizing and participating in this special observance. I will be signing this, but associated with this is a great pride to give a couple of awards. Dustin Cobles, are you here? Would you step forward, please? Right in front, and I'll just join you there. Those of you who may not know of her, and I don't know if that many of you know, Ruth McBride Powers was a person in Oregon City who saved a lot of our historic buildings from being torn down and so forth by procuring them. And she's done, she did a tremendous service in the time she lived during her lifetime. We have a Ruth McBride Powers Memorial Award, 2013 Preservation Month, for the address of 1,008 1010 South, excuse me, 6th Street. Beautiful house, if you haven't seen it. Frank and Minnie, is that Vonderhey House?
We call it the Vonderhey.
Huh?
Vonderhey.
Vonderhey. My understanding is you've done the restoration work, and I think those of you who can see the photograph here can really appreciate it, particularly those that perhaps knew the neighborhood, knew the house, and see it at this particular time. I wanted to compliment you on the great work you've done.
Appreciate it.
And I would guess encourage other owners to take such pride in their historic houses. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a second award, and I'm going to ask Denise McGriff to come forward, if you would. Oh, the word's out there. Denise McGriff, several years ago, was in our planning department, and was very involved in some of the local inventory work we had done here in Oregon City. You also received a Ruth McBride Powers Memorial Award, and for your service in this area. You've done a tremendous job serving on our Planning Commission currently, and has been very involved as a staff member when she was here in the Historic Review Board. Thank you very much for all of your work. Appreciate it.
Is this on?
Yes.
And Doug, I really appreciate it. I'm following in the illustrious footsteps of my friends, Marge and Rolla Harding, and last year's winner, and I'm very lucky to be able to live in a wonderful community like Oregon City, and everybody keep doing the preservation work that we need to do to make our town and history living. Thank you.
I'm not going to come over and hug you, actually. I just want to have you stand up for last year's winner so they can see who was being referred to. Or whenever it was.
First.
The first. Go ahead and stand up and say, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Neely. I have some nice before-and-after photos to show, because this is always the great fun part of these awards. This shows the 2002 survey form for the Vonderhey House. This is the condition in 2011, when the Hakuses purchased it and hired Island architects to come up with a plan for this duplex that was purpose-built, Mediterranean duplex. Here's some quality before photos. This was the basement, lack of foundation, the rear. And once again, the Stork Review Board approved the alterations done by Island architects, and the Hakuses actually sold the property to Dustin, who took on the work. But before I move forward with the kind of reveal, I think this is a really good example of the power of our demolition by neglect and demolition denial code, because at that point, back here, in its condition, it was bank-owned, it had a hole in the roof, and we got a call from somebody, and Guy Spur, our previous building official, and I went down, we looked around, we saw the hole, and we sent a letter to the bank indicating that this was a designated property, we had a demolition by neglect code, there was a potential to deny. to deny demolition request, and I don't want to say that was what brought them to sell the property, but I like to think that's a good story. And a lot of times the demolition by neglect code is really powerful in just that, letting someone know that if your plan was to purchase and demolish the property, you may not be the best property owner. And that oftentimes gets them off and on to a better property owner like Dustin. So, the big reveal. Yay!
Very good.
Wow. The award. And I wanted to recognize and told one of our board members, Historic Review Board votes for Ruth Powers Preservation Award every year and forwards it on to the mayor. And I want to just give a quick quote on Denise McGriff's award from Vicki Gates. Denise's passion for preservation and love for her community is very evident. No matter what hat Denise has worn over the years, she continuously pushes everybody she meets to try a little harder and aim a little higher. And I think that definitely encapsulates Denise and her love of preservation.
Thank you.
For now, is a, and I presume that's what's up here, is a Preservation Month photo contest that is going to be getting now.
Yes. Thank you. Last year we had the first annual photo contest and it worked really well, and this last year the Historic Review Board voted to make it an annual contest and we reached out to Clackamas County Historical Society and said, "Do you want to continue to be a partner?" And they said yes, and we're really trying hard to create as many preservation partnerships as we can. And this year with the "save," "celebrate" theme adopted by the National Trust for Historic Preservation, not for the Preservation Month, we now have online photo submission. So if you go to the Oregon City website and find Planning, so www.orcity.org backslash Planning, you can upload your photos directly to the website. You can also do a hard copy version as well, there's indications there. And we have prizes as last year, $25 for the youth prize for 10 and under, $50 for teen, 11 to 18, and $75 for the adult. And these will be awarded in most likely the July City Commission meeting is our goal.
And, if I can manipulate here, this is last year's winner, Main Street by Erin Skinner. This was our adult winner. Only wanted to carry one around with me today, but for the audience there. Our, here, that one? For our youth winner, we had a five-year-old who took the most wonderful picture of the elevator.
Oh, fun.
And very thrilled to be a winner.
And beat their brothers and sisters.
And, yes, and beat her older brother.
That's the best part.
That was even better. Basically, from Clackamas County Historical Society, we also appreciate our partnerships with the city and "save," "celebrate" should probably be our catchphrase for ever and ever and ever. This was a fun project to do jointly last year and we're thrilled to be partners again this year.
Great.
And there'll be posters being put up throughout the city, they just were printed today, and once again, go online to www.orcity.org backslash Planning and give us your historic photos. You might just be a winner.
Thank you.
And everyone is eligible to enter except for Christina and I.
Can you indicate the judgment, the process that you-
Yeah, the judges last year were the Historic Review Board and members identified by the Clackamas County Historical Society.
Very good.
Very good.
So can we enter or not? You said yes, I said no.
No, it's, right now, people ineligible are people employed by either the city or the county, and I'll leave it to our attorney.
We're not employed.
We're not, we're not, we're not.
We don't, we're not employed.
I am not the attorney, but employees of either organizations are exempt.
We'll, we'll get Mr. Sullivan's-
Yeah, we'll get your opinion.
The one thing I would request, Commissioner Smith, if you do enter and you find some of your former high school students have entered, you know, you might want to reconsider.
We're not in the same category.
No, former, former.
Oh, former.
That are never adults.
Okay, but if I submit it and I win, the money will go back to, I'll put it to something else. It'll go to the Armatinger House.
There you go, there you go. Good cause.
You're not biasing the process by indicating you're not going to take the money out of it.
And, and the other thing-
I don't know.
The voting was blind, by the way.
Yes, it is blind judging, so the judges do not know who took the photos, they just get to see the photos.
I was going to say blind judging.
That'd be a little difficult, blind judging.
Yes, rail photos. It's a new, it's that new digital printer process.
Thanks you guys. Thank you. It's a great contest.
We might be able to win.
We, we now go into the area of citizen comments where citizens will make comments of things that are not on agenda. We're limited to three minutes, we, we may have a lot of people speaking to various issues and I'm going to actually be very strict on the three minutes. I see we have an exhibit from Kevin Hunt, would this be better shown at a different point or is this the appropriate point to show it?
When you call Mr. Hunt if he-
That's up to him, it is something that's sort of on the agenda, but do you want to wait, Mr. Hunt, or do you want to-
I think it'll depend on whether or not you pulled the item from the consent agenda.
We, oh yeah, we'll wait and see then, we'll do that, and then if, if we don't pull it, I mean, if we do pull it, if we do pull it, then-
I think I would ask it to be, it be shown now and then if you don't pull from the consent agenda, it's been shown, and if you do, then it can be taken down and shown later.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead and adopt the agenda now, and if, if it is not pulled, well, how do you come up? And then you make the presentation. If it is, if it is pulled, then we'll wait on it. Are there any other citizens who want to make comments on anything that's not on the agenda?
We have James Nacida on the list.
Yeah, what did I do? Okay, James Nacida and Kevin Hunt, you, I guess you'll be coming later. James Nacida.
My comment for citizen's comment was kind of the same issue, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to get some procedural clarification on whether their, in particular, the city manager's employment agreement will be pulled from the agenda.
If, if it is not, we'll let you come back forward. I mean, if it is, if it is not pulled, we'll let you come back and speak, but we'll make that decision right now.
I just, I just wanted, didn't want to comment precluded because people didn't-
Well, if it's not pulled, then there's not the opportunity.
Yeah, if, if you don't pull it, then this is the only real time-
Yeah, that's right, and we'll make that decision, and should it, should it, should it not be pulled, we'll invite both of you to come forward.
Okay. Well, okay, thank you.
Now the adoption of the agenda.
Oh, wait, you got one more.
Oh, excuse me.
Dave Perdell.
Oh, oh.
We have three more.
Excuse me. We, actually, James Nacida, Kevin Hunt is, are, are holding off, I take it. David Perdell, same issue?
Same thing.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll take care of that. So we'll go ahead, do we have a motion? We'll find out what this is for.
I move to adopt the agenda.
Does it need a motion?
Okay, sorry.
Is there any move to pull anything from the-
Yes, I want to pull both, let's see, go back here, closer.
Both what?
Yeah, she was going to tell us.
Let me go to yours.
I'm trying to find, uh... Okay. Items, there's two items. Contract agreement and the employment agreement.
Okay.
So it's a-
Oh, wait, no, no, excuse me. Employment agreement and paper performance based on annual evaluation, those two, so it's 7C and 7B.
All right. And we're going to enter a public, public, public hearing. This is an order for introduction, number 131007, land use application requesting approval for zone change. It's a subdivision geological hazards permit for the property located at 19370 Pease Road. Now, under these conditions, we need to, I think, declare whether we have any ex-party contacts, is this the point to do so?
This is the point, yeah. This is a proceeding that's quasi-judicial, that means it's relating to a specific property, and under the city's code, the hearing has been held before the Planning Commission and all the evidence has been introduced. You are hearing this on the recommendation of the Planning Commission, no new evidence is allowed at this point, so if something comes in inadvertently or overtly, you're advised to disregard it. I need to ask you whether any of you have had any ex-party contacts with regard to the matter at issue.
I did, I did drive by the site and looked at the map, wanted to get a feeling for where it was, but that was all.
Anybody else?
We all got an email from Mr. Last-
That's right.
About, about two weeks ago, three weeks ago.
What was the email about? Can you tell me?
It was just kind of reciting what the city had decided and the, you know, talking about what his position was on it.
All right. Is that all now from everybody? If anybody wants to ask the Commissioners about either the site visit or the email, this is the time to do it. Hearing none. Do any of you have any interest in the outcome of any monetary or other reason for bias? Everybody shaking their hands, no, heads no. Okay, I think we're ready to-
We'll go ahead with the staff report then.
Good evening, my name is Laura Turway, I'm a planner with the city and I'm here to provide you an overview of this development application. It is for an 11-lot subdivision, a zone change, as well as a geologic hazards review. You can see the general layout of the subdivision on your screen. So let's talk a little bit more about the context of the site. It is located off Pease Road, it's a little over two acres in size. As you can see, it's adjacent to a variety of other residential subdivisions, specifically Pavilion Park Number One is adjacent to it and this is called Pavilion Park Number Two. Let's take a little, little closer look at the site itself. As you can see on the map, there are a couple of existing structures on site, there is a single-family dwelling as well as an accessory structure. Those are both proposed to be demolished with the implementation of a subdivision. There was some fill material placed on site around this area. In 1991, the applicant has submitted documentation to address that. The site was annexed into Oregon City from Clackamas County in 2008 under file number AN0707. As a part of that annexation, there was an annexation agreement, and the annexation agreement will require upon submission of building permits for this subdivision that each property pay a fee of $3,500 to cover police services, and that was just carried forward from the annexation of this property. The property used to be within our natural resource overlay district. The applicant hired a consultant to do a study and the city processed an exemption from that overlay because there is no sites of, no, there are no details that would lead anyone to believe that it is within the overlay district, there's no streams or indicators of a wetland. Let's take a look at the zone change. So, the applicant is in R10. As you know, when you come into the city, you'll already have a comprehensive plan designation most likely. In this case, their comprehensive plan designation was low-density residential. For low-density residential, there's three different zoning designations, R10, R8, and R6. They're all single-family zones, that just applies to the setbacks and the lot size. The property, as you can see on the map, is adjacent to a variety of zoning designations. Most of them are within the same comprehensive plan designation, that R3.5 is 3,500 square foot lots per unit, it allows single-family duplex. It's in a different zoning designation. The applicant in this case has proposed to go to R6, which is directly adjacent to the site. There's a variety of criteria that we looked at for this development proposal, we'll go through those in a bit. I wanted to highlight our zone change criteria, we want to make sure that this particular zone change is in compliance with our comprehensive plan, that there's adequate public facilities to serve it, there's consistency with land uses and it meets our statewide planning goals. As you read in our staff report, it does all of those things. Subdivision itself will add a little bit of connectivity, right now Pavilion Park Number One has this street that stubs into the site right here, so it will continue the street and it will connect with Pease Road. The properties on lots seven, eight, and nine adjacent to Pease Road, according to our code, they're required to orient towards Pease Road. There's a couple of trees on the site, there's 17 to be precise, you can see on this map where some of the existing trees are. There's this row right here, most of the trees will be removed. Section 1741 of our code requires that if a tree over six inches in diameter is removed, that there's mitigation for that, or they'll have to do replacement of the tree, so in this subdivision, they'll have to do that as well. There was a traffic study that was completed for the subdivision, the traffic study was reviewed by John Riplinger of the Riplinger and Associates, who is our city consultant. They determined that the traffic impacts of the subdivision are minimal, there will be about 11 trips during our PM peak period and eight trips during the AM peak period. You can see the improvements that will be required of the subdivision on the screen. Essentially, Pease Road will continue the frontage with the adjacent subdivision, there'll be a bike lane that will be continuous among the two sites, and then they'll have to do plantar strip and street trees as well. There was a concern raised by an adjacent neighbor regarding stormwater. Right now, this is the site right here, some of the stormwater drains to the adjacent property, sorry, the site is much larger right here. With the analysis submitted by the applicant, it has been determined that two-thirds of the stormwater from this subdivision will go into a different system. It'll go with this larger arrow into a pipe and be filtered down into this pond here, so a third of the water is left to account for. The applicant has indicated that after the subdivision is built, they'll have less water going on into the system that goes to the adjacent property owners, which is right here. There are conditions of approval to assure that if there's more water, that it is mitigated. So the applicant has indicated that there will be no more water going to the adjacent property owners, we're confident that that can be achieved. These are all the approval criteria that we look at for the subdivision. So with that, we recommend approval with conditions, we did have a revised staff report and the Planning Commission did recommend approval with conditions as well. Are there any questions I can answer regarding the subdivision?
Yeah, I will have a quick, a comment. I was wondering if you could back, back to the slide which actually showed the vegetation and so forth and it showed the retention pond.
Listen.
I think so, I'll go flip back here, I was checking to see if anybody was on. When I drove by the site and, and I think it reflects the one-third that left the site, I went back on the cord road, I passed the retention pond, and I think people can notice that there in fact is a bit of a gully, I presume it's an intermittent stream that goes down through there, and I presume that's the area in which the, the water from that one end of the site goes into. And I guess my first question is, were there any wetland species growing on, on the site that's before us here?
There was not, when the exemption for the natural resource overlay district was approved, they hired a consultant to go on site and they did not find any indicators of a wetland on site. The feature itself was strange because it was unconnected to any other feature. There is also a bunch of fill that was placed on site in 1991, so it, in that same location.
So it's been modified probably before we did our wetland overlay.
All we know is that there were no indicators now, so we processed a type one exemption and that's been completed.
I think it's important to remember when we did, when we did our water quality resource area in 1999, you know, a lot of that was taken from aerial, and, and so if something showed, it got tagged, and then we put the buffer around it that says, okay, there maybe, maybe not, but we need to look at it closer. So when they came in for the exemption, that was the closer look that was taken, as Laura was saying, it was a disconnected-
So it was in the buffer, got evaluated?
Correct, yeah, so it was, it was looked at, it was evaluated, the determination was made, there were no wetland species indicators, soils, vegetation on the site per the, the report. report.
The other question I had was, how many of these trees being removed are within the building envelope and how many outside?
So most of them are here and here. So most of them are within the envelope or right on where, this would be a sidewalk planar strip. So a couple on-site.
So we're using the traditional mitigation on the trees within the envelope and outside the end of it?
Correct. We have the, the mitigation schedule that determines replacement trees based on where it's located, whether it's inside the, the setback or outside of the setback.
Are the, on the street trees mitigation or are they independent?
Those are independent. Mitigation trees are above and beyond the required street trees.
Okay. Commission have any other questions before we open up for public hearing?
Do you have more presentation?
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we'll open up the public hearing. As our attorney said, we do not accept new evidence, but the planning commission directed to come before us, so any presentation of evidence that was presented before can be heard. We're going to limit testimony to three minutes per person. And we have a Mr. Givens coming up for public testimony. Please come forward, please.
Good evening. My name is Rick Givens. I'm a planning consultant working for the applicant in this proposal. As you know, this application was heard by the planning commission and there were several issues that were of concern, that were discussed in detail and ultimately resolved into this planning commission's satisfaction in making the recommendation for approval. I would say the biggest concerns that were discussed were the drainage way because we had testimony that, from a neighbor that was concerned about the amount of water that comes onto their property, the density of the zone change, whether that was the appropriate thing or not, and the fill on the property. Those were the major issues. I'll take them in kind of reverse order. The fill, basically, we had a geotechnical study that looked at the site and determined that the fill that was placed on there was not put on in an engineered fashion and therefore recommends that the fill be excavated and replaced with an engineered fill and we plan to do that. Regarding the density of the zone change, planning commission looked at the area around there and said, well, there's R-8, and there's R-10, and there's R-6, and there's R-3.5. Why is this the appropriate zoning? And we presented, and you'll find in the record, photographic evidence coming down Pavilion Place where you, which this street completes that neighborhood, showing that, you know, the density in that area is such that you're looking at houses on 3,500 square foot lots typically, and 10,000 square foot zoning that exists there would be three times as large and you're on the same street. Even R-8.5 would be roughly two and a half times as large. So there was that, just kind of eyeball test. Beyond that, there was looking at the plan policies and you'll find in there the policies that I presented, to go through the various policies that relate to density within your comprehensive plan. Planning commission finally agreed that that was the most appropriate zoning, given analysis of all of that. Now, I'd be happy to go into it in more detail, but I don't want to take up too much time. You only gave me three minutes anyway, so.
Well, no, actually, the applicant has more time. I'm sorry, I should have made that clear. The applicant actually has more time. My apologies.
And we reset the clock there.
Yeah.
So I don't know if you want to revisit any of that, but I'd be happy to, but I think the planning commission felt that, as I, if I can paraphrase, a couple of the responses I heard that night was that, well, we really would rather see R-8 because, well, it makes, you know, we'd like the neighborhood across the street, but we understand the issues and the plan that we submitted showed an R-8 layout and how it didn't fit well with the, there's an existing, we're talking wiggle list, oh, that wasn't good. Did I fix that, Tony? In this area here, there's an easement that comes through the property that has existing utilities. In fact, utilities are already developed throughout the property and that, that basically mandates where the street has to be in this particular project. And R-8 development just didn't fit well within there. We were only able to get one more lot under R-8 zoning than we would under R-10 and again, the lots were two and a half to three times the size that you would find in the rest of the neighborhood. Just from a standpoint of making a cohesive neighborhood, R-6 is the best for the site and it completes what's happening adjacent to it in, in the property to the southeast and that is part of Pavilion Park One. The storm drainage concern was something the planning commission obviously took greatly to heart because we had a neighbor who was talking about some significant issues they have of erosion and times when there's a significant amount of water that comes through this. You see here, there's existing catch basins in this area in Pease Road and there's this existing storm drain cuts diagonally across what's part of the street and then parts of lots six and seven and outfalls onto that property below. Almost all of the water, you know, is coming from upstream from Pease Road, but all of the subject property drains to this existing catch basin at that point. So all the water that flows off of this property right now ends up in that pipe. Now, obviously, when we develop it and put in roofs and streets and sidewalks, we have a quickening of the time that the water gets into the system, so there's a lot of issues that have to be looked at. But as the staff report noted, about two-thirds of the property can be caught with catch basins at this point and be brought back into the storm sewer system that goes through Pavilion Park One and outfall to the storm detention facility in that project. As a result, we'll actually be taking a lot of the water that currently is going to that property and getting it out of their system and away from them, hopefully improving the situation. We've agreed to a condition of approval that says that we will not increase the flow in any way, shape, or form, and we will have presented a study prepared by Theta Engineering that shows how we can do that. Staff has agreed that it's feasible. So I think that those were the three big issues. I'd be happy to discuss any other things, but we think this completes Pavilion Park neighborhood in a, in a good way and will be a good asset to the community. Bruce Goldson of Theta Engineering is here with me tonight. If you have specific questions on the storm drainage issue, otherwise, I think that is our presentation.
Any questions from the commission? Incidentally, I didn't open the public hearing because I wasn't supposed to. The applicant is supposed to come up first and then I can open the public hearing.
Uh-oh.
Sorry about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now I will officially open the public hearing. And again, anybody who wants to speak on this, with, with evidence that was previously presented to the planning commission could come forward, but I would limit the time to three minutes. You have to sign up if you're going to do it and also, okay. Oh, he is there. He's not green. He'll become green. William Gifford will become Florida. And I, I assume that you are aware of the evidence that was presented to the planning commission.
I was there.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford. And although at issue, I want to speak directly to the zoning issue. And the zoning, I mean, because the waterfall, the water drainage, the, the fill and everything seem to be adequately addressed, except for the fact that this is right across the street basically from R-10 and R-8 homes. And across from an R-8 home, an R-6 might be more appropriate, but an R, from, to go from an R-10 to an R-6, I think is a pretty drastic change. And the, the applicant points out that the, that the, the existing utilities are already in place and that's what's dictating where the road is. And I question, how can you put in those utilities before it's been zoned? And it seems to me as though that the, that the, it's, it's probably water under the bridge now, but I would certainly hope that in the future, we're not going to be letting utilities be put in the ground before the thing has been properly zoned, because I think it's, R-6 is too drastic of a change there. It should have been R-8. But the fact that the utilities are already there, it's a fait accompli and we're sort of stuck with it. I disagree that that should have been done that way, but apparently it is.
I can, I can just, I guess go to, to staff there for a moment. Do you have anything to say in response?
Well, Willie, let's see. Let me, if we can pop up the. What this would show is to the northeast of the subject site is R-3.5, to the southeast is R-6, to the northwest you have Pease Road. On the other side of Pease Road, you have some R-8, some R-10, some R-8, and to the south you have R-10. As you go to the south, you start to go, fall down into that steep slope valley area where the creek eventually does form. You know, what we've been trying to do is historically, we've gone in and we've put in a storm pond for every subdivision. And what we've tried to do in this area, we've, we've realized that, okay, is this really the best way to do this? And when we have those opportunities on larger developments like this to oversize a new storm pond that's designed to take future development, so that this little subdivision, whether it was R-10, R-8, or R-6, you're, you know, you're not talking too many lots, that they don't have to put in a small little storm pond that then the city takes over and maintains. How can they, how can we better do this? And, and so when we look at this plan as well, there we go. You've got to remember Pavilion, the R-3.5 right here was, was, was approved. We want lots that are two lots deep and that's what they provided and that meant the street was right here and it was stubbed to the property line. And with as little area as there is, with this falling off into the hillside, there were very limited options as to, this street was dictated to connect right here and it had to come this way. And we tried to keep the two-deep blotting pattern. Now, you know, could this street have come in right here or could it have gone here or here? You know, with as little as this was and looking at it, this seemed reasonable at the time. So, you know, putting utilities in ahead of time, usually we don't, but in this case, you had a fixed point right here and the utilities were coming down here. We looked at to be able to collect this at some point in the future. It was owned by, by the developer to the north. And utilize and consolidate those utilities so that we didn't end up with redundant services up here. So yes, I, I take your point very seriously.
It's less expensive for them to do it while they're out there digging everything up already.
Sure.
I'm just saying that it was, it's sort of preordained and it happened before the zoning.
Well, this road was going to be right here. Now, you know, could we make these R-8 and shift a couple, you know, between R-10 and R-6, I think we're talking two lots.
Yeah.
And it really impacts this area up here, not so much along this property line. This property line is set, this property line is set, this property line is set, and this point is set. And so when you start having all these set sizes, there's only so many ways you can, you can make the cube work. So I do take your point, but that was, that was what we were looking at in this one.
Could you show the map again that shows the zoning? Now, the, the lots across from Pease Road that we see built out, we see, I'm going to say downhill, R-8. Where does the R-10, which?
This color right here is R-10.
But that hasn't been built, is that right?
Correct. This has been built, obviously, to the southwest a little bit further.
Well, I'll just pose the question, given the, the designations that you currently see building, being built, which you got R-3.5, one in R-6, R-8 across the way, could a developer ask, based on adjacent properties, for a zone change that's more compatible with the neighborhood?
Could.
For the R-10 piece?
The vacant one?
Yeah.
Certainly, if they, if they wanted to, they could come in and request that.
The point is, we don't have any R-10 lots there at this time that's been built and part of the subdivision, is that right?
That's R-8. I'm sorry, I was answering two questions. This, this, this color right here is R-8. This is R-8. So we have this one silver in the middle.
We have not conflicted in R-10 buildings at this point.
Correct.
Well, there's one, it looks like right next to the site, that's a R-10.
Right. And this is where, you know, this, right here, this subdivision when it came in, imagine, this is all sloping down from this point down to a little creek. And then the same thing happens over here. So really, you know, this is, this is a tough spot right here. You know, there's, that's why we, you know, you don't see a road stubbed into it, is because you have topography issues, you have natural resource issues, you know, these are, this is, the redevelopment potential is, is limited here because of topography and natural resources.
Right. But I could see your point.
I, I agree. It's probably the only solution that you possibly can do. I'm just saying that I did think the cart was a little before the horse for them to put the utilities in before it was zoned. That's the only point I wanted to make.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the applicant want to respond in any way?
We're done with the public.
Are we done with the public?
Well, as we'll find out, I'll flip back and then take a peek. We have no other speakers. With that, I'll close the public hearing. I guess we have more than one alternative. We could continue the hearing, but we surely did not hear much in the way of opposition.
Can I, can I ask one question real quick? So it sounded like we didn't have any other public who wished to testify. Before we, can we see if the applicant wants a rebuttal? I missed your.
I, I asked him. He said no.
No, I was just asking, well, there's somebody else to go.
No, no, we had nobody. That's why I asked you, because I had nobody else on this.
Would you?
I would like just a moment.
Sure, go ahead. Absolutely.
The record is Rick Givens. I just would point out, as Mayor Neely was talking about, the only R-10 that's immediately in the area is the piece to the southwest that's the property that was concerned about the storm drainage issues. That area is impacted by the drainage way on their property, as we've talked about. So it's kind of a different circumstance than this subject property. The property across the street on the other side of Pease Road is the default zoning that came in is R-10. And I would fully expect that there will be a zone change to R-8 at the time that that property is developed, since the property on both sides of it is R-8 and it would be completely in those neighborhoods. Again, this just completes neighborhood that goes from R-3.5 to R-6, the same as exists in the rest of Pavilion Park. Seems like it's a logical pattern. It also fits the existing conditions. The utilities were put there primarily, as Tony indicated, because at the time that it was being developed, it was the most efficient way to get utilities to part of Pavilion Park and also make sure that the storm water from that site could be taken around into the storm drainage detention pond so that it wouldn't impact property that was of concern. So that's why they're there. Again, we think it makes the most sense. We'd ask you approval. Thank you.
Mr. Conical, we, you know, most of us here haven't had experience of land use. You might want to talk about the default zoning when, when land is brought in to the actual, outside the urban growth, growth boundary brought into the city, there's a default zoning that occurs, right?
Correct. And in our municipal, in the municipal code, what it, we have a two-map system in Oregon City. You have one that is your zoning code, which is what you see here tonight with your R-6, your R-8, your R-10, your R-3.5. That's more specific. Below that, a more general map is called our comprehensive plan map. And so all of our lands out to our urban growth boundary have a comprehensive plan designation. And so if you're outside of the city limits, you're still under county zoning jurisdiction. Once you're annexed, our code specifies if you're low-density residential on the comprehensive plan, even though there are three zoning designations that are appropriate, R-10, R-8, and R-6, you default to the largest, which is R-10. And then if you want to come in and request a zone change, you go through that process once the annexation is complete. If you were medium-density residential with a comp plan, you would come in at R-5 or a 5,000 square foot lot. And there are two there, R-3.5 and R-5. So we have these default zonings that, for many of our comprehensive plan designations that automatically happen if you're successful upon annexation.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
As I said, I think we have a couple of options, a continuance if we had reason to do so. I presume, is, does this be an ordinance? Is this a first reading?
It is.
And if somebody wants to put forward a motion for a first reading?
Can I close the hearing?
Oh, excuse me. And we close the public hearing. Thank you. With that, the, the, the decision's up to the commission, but I don't know, it's been passed on by the planning commission. We haven't really heard a great deal of testimony against it and that was somewhat nuanced. Does anyone want to proceed and make a motion for a first reading?
You have the speaker in the queue, Mayor.
Oh, I do? Well, we closed the public hearing.
Yes. It's Commissioner Ma.
Oh, excuse me. You made a motion?
I didn't make a motion, but I wanted to make a comment.
I didn't make a motion, but I wanted to make a comment. I have to tell you, I didn't attend the planning committee, commission meetings, but I heard them online, I went online, and I have to recommend, I mean, they are some of the best planning commissioners that we, I think I have ever seen. They really drilled down on this one, and they held a lot of information in that notebook. So, kudos to them for knowing what they're doing. I appreciate what they did.
Does that mean you want to make a motion?
It was good, yes.
Does that mean you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Or?
To, to, for first reading? For P C 13 dash 0 through 8, ordinance for introduction of number 13 dash 1007, land use application requesting approval for a zone change, 11 lot subdivision and geologic hazards permit for property located at 19370 Pease Road.
Second.
Moved in second, and first reading, please.
Just left?
Can't vote yet.
Let me go back, let me go back.
Oh, we can't.
This is ordinance number 13 dash 1007, an ordinance demanding Title 17 zoning, Chapter 17.06.030 of the official zoning map of the Oregon City Municipal Code, by changing the properties identified as Clackamas County Map 32E 7B, tax lot 3300, from R 10, single-family dwelling district, to R 6, single-family dwelling district, and approving an 11-lot subdivision and geological hazards review for the properties.
The motions are made by Betty Mum, seconded by Carol Polly. Vote, please. It's unanimous, and that'll be coming back to us for a second reading, it's a different type. Thank you. Go on to the next item, and that item is, when I get down here. This is the item that has been polled, I guess, is that right? Okay.
Do we approve the consent agenda first, or?
No, no, we hear this, this becomes, I guess, becomes part of our regular agenda before we get to the consent agenda.
Thank you.
I will take probably Kevin Hunt first, I think he had an exhibit, and he was actually listed. Do you want to come forward first?
Yeah. I'll try.
Okay.
I thought staff was doing a report.
Well, HR has something, but they can go after.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and make your presentation, and then I'll go over to staff. The one thing, staff might be able to respond to something in the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Kevin Hunt, I live in Oregon City, and my comments would also, I'm sure, going to touch a little bit on Item 7C. Could I have my exhibit pulled up, would that be possible? And the purpose of the exhibit, it's kind of a simplistic exhibit, and, and the purpose of the exhibit is not simply to be so simplistic as, as to say that the salary cost per resident is outrageously high in Oregon City. You have to look at all of the columns, but I think what's significant, what I think citizens might want to take a comparative look at is our neighbor down the road, Lake Oswego, its population, its cost per resident, and then take a look at the median household incomes between Oregon City and Lake Oswego, $57,000 versus $81,000.
This is, this is your own research, may I ask?
No, as I indicated, my email's to you and on here.
Wait, this is the public?
This, this research came from a colleague of mine, it was taken from census data. So, anyway, I believe that this agreement is a matter of extreme public importance, and for that reason, I don't believe that it's appropriate for you to vote on it tonight. I think that there should be additional time for the public to have input on this to you. I think if the citizens of Oregon City were fully aware of the contents of this agreement, that you'd have a lot more input coming in. Let's just, for the benefit of the citizens, let's just look at this. This is a five-year agreement, it spans two elections, it's a compensation, which already exists, of $13,650 per month, which is just under three times the median salary of an Oregon City resident. With the retirement of, in addition to PERS, in addition to PERS, 3.5%, the retention incentive of 75% of monthly salary for each full year of service. Then, we go into this interesting termination clause, 8B. If there's a change in the law pertaining to the role, powers, duties, authority, or responsibilities of the city manager, he could declare that that constitutes a termination. Well, you know, Oregon City is only, as I believe, only one of two cities in the state of Oregon where the city manager hires the city attorney and not the city commission. So, what if the people decide to adopt a charter amendment to bring Oregon City into the 21st century and allow you, the commission, to hire the city attorney? Mr. Frazier could call that a change in his powers and his role, and he could declare a termination, he could walk away with nine months' worth of salary. I think this is outrageous. There's just too many, there's just too many details like this in this, for this to be pushed through in this manner, and for it to have recently been on the consent agenda. That severance provision, by the way, was Section 9. The hours of work, he's allowed to set his own schedule, I suppose that does make some sense, especially since Section 12 allows him to moonlight. On a salary of $174,038 a month, or a year, he's allowed to moonlight. I think I went into the wrong profession, is all I can say. I have nothing against Mr. Frazier personally, I have, I think the city manager should be well-compensated, but I think that there has to be some reasonableness to it, and some of these, some of these clauses, I think are going to be extremely unpopular with the public. In particular, that his ability to declare a termination on such vague grounds, when there's a need to make some changes in the roles and powers of the, of the city manager in order to bring the Oregon City Charter into a place where it's commensurate with those charters that exist in other cities in the state of Oregon. So, I also note that the people have had the benefit of these two nice staff reports. The first one is 63 words, not including the title, and the second one is 85 words, exclusives of the title. And they tell us nothing. They tell us, this is what, this is what the commission agreed to do, and this is how much it's going to cost, and the same thing with this one. Now, I understand that negotiations are done in executive session, I understand that there's confidentiality, but really, I think this is just so opaque, that it's just unworthy of support at this time without further input from the public. And I'm sure, I know you're going to get some more input tonight, but I would ask that you postpone this matter. I don't know, I heard, and I don't know if it's true or not, I heard Mr. Frazier might this time be working without a contract. If that, if that is true, because it expired, I understand there's, the time may be kind of the essence, but on the other hand, if that's true, there shouldn't be any problem in one more month going by. Thank you.
Mr. Leffler, would you want to speak now, or do you want to wait to?
I'll wait until everybody's done.
Okay, very good. He's probably ended up speaking then anyway. Okay. With that, get out of there. James Nacida and Dave Friedo, please come forward. And limited to three minutes each.
James Nacida, I live in Oregon City, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to follow up. My comment was on one of the provisions that Mr. Hunt spoke to, so maybe redundant emphasis is not inappropriate in an instance like this. My, my focus on this contract is also concerns over Section 8B, on the cost to our democracy, or putting a cost on democracy that Section B represents. I don't, I never thought I would have the occasion to correct Mr. Hunt, but I think tonight's my, my occasion to correct Mr. Hunt. He indicated that if, that the city manager had the right to terminate this employment agreement and walk with nine months of salary. Actually, Section 9 on severance, and maybe Mr. Leffler can speak to this when he discusses this, the termination clause invoking Section 9 would constitute severance payment equal to nine months' salary and benefits. And I think my concern, or one of them about this, is that benefits isn't defined in this contract, but I would assume, and maybe we, that could be part of the discussion, Section 3 is compensation, I assume that's salary, but I think benefits would include, ooh, Sections 4, 5, 6, and 7, and that the retention incentive could be considered a benefit, and it's subject to interpretation. So, if there were a change, if the citizens, or the commission threw a referral, the citizens through initiative decided to change our charter, some of the concerns I have about both the cost through salary and benefits, but the interpretation of this provision, because I think this provision is very broadly and ambiguously written, and it can be interpreted in a couple of ways. A broad interpretation of this provision would mean that any charter amendment, he cited, Mr. Hunt cited the city attorney change, who hires the city attorney, I think that under a broad interpretation of this provision could lead to the termination and the severance. A narrow, more narrow understanding of this provision might be, for example, simply if this, if there was a change from the city council manager form of government to some other government, like this commission truly being a commission like in Portland, where you all, you know, are paid in look-over departments, et cetera. So, but the clause is so ambiguous that I think it could be interpreted so that the most minor of charter amendment impingements on the current authority of the city manager could lead to invocation of the termination clause, and be, as far as a financial cost to the citizens if they, you know, chose to make a change, it's, it's a concern. I mean, one option would be simply, yeah, okay. Can I have 15 seconds, Mr. Mayor? One option would be just to change the language explicitly to a change from the council manager form of government. But even that, why impose on, that cost on the citizens if they democritically choose to make a change? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Friedo.
Dave Friedo, Oregon City. I'd like to follow up on Mr. Hunt's recommendation that you delay this and postpone, give the public a chance for more input. Several of you have indicated that you took to heart the message last November, that the voters felt that the citizen should have a right to participate in important decisions, and I think this is one of those important decisions, and also, like Mr. Hunt, I, this is not personal, I like Mr. Frazier, but I, when I read this document, it's like, my goodness, it's just, it's astounding, I've never seen such a sweetheart deal, giving away the farm. And it's like, it's obviously written by lawyers, it's, there's so much vague, open-ended stuff in here, and I want to just dash through a few of the things that haven't been addressed as far as the money issues and so on, but some, some others, I, I kind of got the impression that maybe this is like a defensive document, like the city manager is kind of worried that, you know, maybe he'll take criticism or something, and I'm just trying to understand what's, what's behind this. I'll just dash through about six points here, this first page, whereas, provide the employee's morale and peace of mind. We'd all like to have a contract in the jobs that we do that would help us, us with that. On 7C, this is really, really open, and maybe the lawyer that wrote this knows what it means, but, "The employer recognizes certain reasonable expenses of a non-personal but job-related nature." Who's going to monitor that? What, what does that mean? You know, maybe, maybe you guys know what it means, I don't know, it's. 11, hours of work, Mr. Hunt referred to this. He shall be allowed to establish an appropriate work schedule. Golly, all of us would love to, you know, establish our own work schedules, it doesn't say, you know, number of hours, and it's just wide open, it's like carte blanche. Number, Section 12, outside activities, Mr. Hunt referred to that as moonlighting. Again, this is wide open. Employee may elect to accept other opportunities, so long as he does a city job. I think it's, it's either sloppily written, or written with the intent to be open-ended. Indemnification, I'm not a lawyer, I don't know what that means, it seems like, you know, he can get in any kind of trouble, and he'll be, you know, off scot-free, I don't know. And 16B, finally, binding on the heirs and executors of the contract, I, that'd be great, you know, we have a contract and say that carries over into longevity. I just would ask you, please, to, since he's already, you know, apparently on a non-contract, just hold it over for another month, give the public a chance to, you know, put in a little more of their ideas and what they think. Thank you.
Paul Edgar and Jim Hamilton, three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner, my name is Paul Edgar, I'm from Oregon City. I would like for you to really seriously consider this being taken over, taken to the Citizens' Involvement Council for review. I think it's a big contract, and this is an important thing, and I'd like to think that we could see it put onto a spreadsheet where we compare each of the cities and, and the full benefit packages, and, and so we can see it all spelled out, the, all of the comparisons, and see how it does fit. And, and get it, get a chance where the citizens themselves of Oregon City can, can look at it. Secondly, in here, I really think that this is a placing, this long-term, five years. And I know Kevin Hunt and others have spoke to say that it goes into multiple elections. I think this is a burden to passing on to a, a next mayor, and next city commissions this, and I've had concerns that our city, though we've done some good things, we have not really got our act together in economic development, we've not had a strategic home run hit, we are not creating jobs, private sector jobs, we're not getting this type of growth that we need, and that's going to pay. And, and I'd like to see those types of incentives build into doing something more than just how we redirect public money, or save a few dollars. We expect that of a good city manager. We expect them to be trying to do what's right, but we've also expect in our CEO that we are hiring good people and are advancing, bringing our city forward. And I'm concerned about, we, salesman-in-chief, somebody going out there beyond just being our mayor, but when I look at what Hillsborough was doing, or I'm looking at some of these other cities, and I'm seeing these other people talking about all of the different growth and the different people, and they're actively going out there and saying, come on down, let's figure out how to do that, we're not doing that in Oregon City. And I think that's, and, and so that falls back in my mind to the, to the CEO of the city. And, and if we're not advancing ourselves in an aggressive manner, then maybe it should be two years out there, we take a look, and we take a deep breath, and the next mayor and the next administration takes a look and says, okay, are we winning? And, and are the staff there that we want? Thank you very much.
Jim Hamilton.
Good evening, how are you doing? My name is Jim Hamilton, I live here in Oregon City, Oregon. Approach this a little different, I've been meeting with a number of gentlemen of the community about talking about a reformation plan for Oregon City. The new city concept plan, or a United City Compact, that will eliminate many of the foreseeable crises that are globally apparent, and locally showing us that there are needs to be changes. The United City Compact is a growing organic entity of ideas, concepts, and collective team dynamics. Many individuals, as well as myself, have spent hours involved in the process of forming Many individuals, as well as myself, have spent hours involved in the process of forming a new city plan of the governed, that will not only work here in OC, but in any city in the state and beyond. Therefore, we ask that this issue of employment increases for Mr. Frazier be delayed for at least two meetings or two months to finish up this plan of reformation presented to This plan, should you decide on it for the good of the people, is one that will financially compensate the elected, that's you folks, and seriously, this plan will help the elected become more viable to govern this great city with all the personal costs associated, as many of you know, it's coming out of your own pocket. Many of its community leaders have come up with the same conclusion, we can no longer work within the old system treating the people as lessers, when in reality, we, the people, are the key to the future. We are raising the Einsteins of the community, and only through an integral system of changes can this great city arise to its full potential. How is simple, through greater interaction and higher quality education that is designed to come as our community evolves into great city possibilities. How did this come about? We started out with three main concepts for the good of people, we added a fourth, and we can gladly grow to a fifth and sixth degrees of correction, but we'll do it together. Yet we only can do it as a collective unity. To do this, we are nurturing new community leaders who will help mentor and apply these new concepts should they be adopted. Partly pros, ongoing nurturing process, ensuring principles and practices that work, modeling, and demonstrating those principles-
Mr. Hunter, I'm going to interrupt you, because I see you have several pages to read there-
Yeah, okay.
-and you're two minutes through.
Anyway, just cut to the chase, we've got too many leaders who are not elected ones, who are at times pulling the strings behind the scenes, profiting one another and leaving equity and integrity behind, which in turn has been shown in this council in past times as leading a racketeering and corruption on many levels. I don't want to go negative on this, but it seems that many city managers are concerned with the egoists within and not the people in the externality, the ones who have, who are elected to serve as one man and one heart for the community, this right directly in front of me, not to the sights. The concept plan would be to form a social compact for the good of people. I could go on some further, but time is here. The question arises is how can this, or any paradigm change, come about within our communities? It's not the foundation unchangeable, that's what most people would say. I'll cite the Oregon Constitution, section one, natural rights inherent in the people. We declare that all men, when they form a social compact, are equal and right, that all power is inherent in the people, and all the free governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their peace, safety, and happiness, and they have at all rights, at all times, a right to alter, reform, or abolish the government such as matters they may think proper. We, the people, of vision and respect for humanity, have a duty to this republic to ensure it stands for freedom, to see democracy become the conduct agreed upon by the compact of men that will ensure and maintain their freedoms for generations to come. It starts with David Frazier resigning tonight.
Thank you. If you want to, you may submit your written report for the record. Michael Berman and Nancy Walters, please.
Michael Berman, Oregon City, Kanema neighborhood, vice chair of the CIC. The numbers are not irrelevant to me, but the importance of citizen input, or at least the ability for citizens of our city to know about this contract and the salary and the deal and negotiations, it came upon us fairly quickly, and it was on the non-consent agenda. And I think that while the CIC may or may not have any relevant input to this, we often are included in almost really everything that happens in the city, sometimes just maybe trivial things. And it makes me question the validity of, or the purpose of the CIC, if something of this importance is, is not given a chance, is not given to the CIC to take a look at it. That's all I really have to say about it. I don't begrudge anybody for making more money than I do, or making a lot of money. I don't know what went into the decision with this negotiation. City managers vary wildly in their, in their income, on the west and east coast, they make a lot more money than they do in the, in the Midwest. In the great state of Kansas, they make relatively less money. In Bell City, California, a city manager is making quite a lot of money, nearly a million dollars. So, you know, is $174,038 a year too much? Maybe he's worth a lot more than that to us as a city, maybe he's such a great asset that he would be worth twice that much. It does seem, when you look, when you break it down, that it does seem quite, quite high. And as somebody that's in the private sector, I'm always looking at places to save money, wherever I can. Also, I try to look at places where I can save money, and also so I don't set a precedent. If I pay an entertainer X amount of money, and the rest of the entertainers know that I pay an entertainer that kind of money, they all want to make that kind of money. And, and I don't know that maybe this is a precedent-setting, a precedent-setting contract, and that's kind of really what worries me, is becoming a very top-heavy municipality. I, again, I really actually don't know if I like or dislike David Frazier, he's polite and nice and kind and intelligent, and, and he's been very courteous to me, always. But that's, that has, you know, very little to do with, with the bottom line, which is what I'm looking at here and what everybody else is looking at. And with that in mind, I would request that we postpone this for at least a chance for the CIC to discuss this, and, and allow our citizens, who actually are the people that pay these salaries, the commission doesn't pay the salaries, we all pay the salary, and I think that it's irrelevant that we all get a chance to take a look at it. I don't know that would influence the decision ultimately, it's obviously your decision, and, but that's, that's where I'm coming from.
Thank you. Nancy Walters.
Nancy Walters, Oregon City. I also wanted to just repeat what everybody said about, it's really difficult to understand how something of this nature would, would land on the consent agenda, so I'm really glad that you're allowing some additional discussion about it tonight, and I hope that you will also postpone the decision for further discussion. I believe that the proposed compensation is above market rates, it's kind of seems pretty clear based on that table. And when you pay above-market rates for, in government, it enters society in two ways. Number one, it reduces the net earnings of taxpayers, not just the affluent, but also the majority who are earned in the middle and the poor. It also stifles economic growth. It's been estimated that each additional $1 of taxation destroys up to $1.50 in economic growth, and economic growth translates into jobs, sustainable jobs created in the private market. By overcompensating its employees, government denies jobs to others and unnecessarily entrenches poverty. Before approving Mr. Frazier's contract, I urge you to define every compensation so voters can know every possible expenditure, not just what the IRS considers taxable income. For example, what is the highest annual accrual of vacation, sick, and other leave? And what is the purpose for giving Mr. Frazier nearly $6,000 in addition to the purse retirement contribution, which many believe is already too high? I think the public's had a lot of discussion with them, it's been one of the number-one topics in Salem this year. There's, you know, been a lot of talk about reform, and we're talking about adding $6,000 a year above that. In my opinion, Mr. Frazier's contributions to the overall lack of transparency, accountability, and public trust in Oregon City provides no reason for him to remain in Oregon City, particularly for the length of the contract. Thank you.
Mr. Post and Mr. Gifford. On the order I called.
Howard Post on Kanema. Might take a little different tact, $174,000 divided by 12 is $14,500 a month, a month. Divided by four is $3625 a week. Divided by 40 is $90 an hour, which is $720 a day. He makes three times the average income already of the persons in Oregon City, we're the taxpayers, we have no money, we have a lot of things to do, and you want to give them a 10% raise per year, which is $17,400. To me, this is nuts, and I think when the citizens become aware of this, there's going to be revolt. We've got all these problems, people are being laid off, have no money, and you're going to give somebody $17,400 for five years, which makes his base pay $261,000. To me, that's a little excessive for Oregon City, and we're going to pay for it. You guys don't pay for it, I mean, you're the board, and you do it for nothing, but to me, it's excessive. And I think if the ratepayers, you, me, and everybody else find out about it, they're going to go nuts. So I think maybe postpone it for a month and get some input, because I think there's going to be some real revibrations. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Mr. Gifford.
Mayor, City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford, I live in Oregon City. If you want an average-
If I object to the, Mr. Gifford turning the exhibit off, it was put on the benefit of the people during this discussion, I'd ask that he be instructed to put it back on.
Well, it can be put on at a later point, when we have discussions from the staff.
It's not part of my presentation.
It's not part of your, his presentation, and you had your three minutes, go ahead.
If we want an average city commissioner, or a city, city manager, if we want a mediocre city manager, I, or we can lowball this job and, and get something barely adequate, I think we deserve the best that this city can afford. I think that we've proven that we can afford this, and I think we ought to get the best city manager we can afford. Commissioner Polley, you're a fool. And Commissioner Mum, you're a fool. Mr. Mayor, you're a fool. Commissioner Roth, you're a fool. Commissioner Smith, you're a fool.
My kids said that once, but-
I'm not finished.
My students said that once.
Mr. Sullivan, you're a fool. Mr. Frazier, that's up for discussion. Mr. Loff, you're a fool, and that is the message that is being given to you tonight. I don't believe that. I don't believe any of you are fools. I think that you made a, a deal with professional help with months of deliberation, I think that you spent a lot of time and good professional help deciding this. I don't think that this should be negotiated by some public spectacle, such as the CIC. I think you, you need to be honorable and respect the commitments that you have made, and I just remind you that you get what you pay for. And if you want the best, you better pay for the best.
Amy Wilhite and Blaine Meyer, please.
Amy Wilhite, Oregon City, and I take offense at Mr. Gifford's statement, but I have done payroll for years, I've seen lots of contracts, lots of highly compensated employee contracts, and when I read this contract, I was amazed that you were willing to accept this contract. It is very, I felt poorly written, leaves too much open. I would highly recommend, as has been stated here today, that it's taken more, I don't know how long you've looked at it, but I, I would just seriously question, I think there are too many loopholes, and I think that the city has a right, you know, you talk about transparency, no, I don't think it, you don't put it up for a vote, I don't, I'm not suggesting that, but I think that this is too open-ended of a contract, and that's what I like to say.
Mr. Meyer.
Thank you. My name is Blaine Meyer, I'm a business owner, and also on the, president of the Oregon City Business Alliance, and on the chamber board, president-elect of the Lions Club, very involved in our city, and very supportive of the work that you do, very supportive of representative government. And so I reviewed the document that was exhibited by Kevin Hunt, and I just frankly don't see that it has any standing. I, I don't know really what is going on here, whether it's Mr. Frazier's salary, or whether it's a political system, an attempt to change a political system, there are a lot of different issues going on, and I, I am concerned about that. Salaries are a very relative issue, and to make judgments about who is earning what, that's just a, that's a very relative ground to be standing on. To make comments about there's too much authority being invested, you know, that's a subjective, those are subjective kinds of issues. This contract, contracts are negotiable. You know, we don't put contracts up to a vote of the people, I mean, if you take his argument to his logical conclusion, then why are you sitting here tonight? Why don't we just eliminate city commissioners, and in fact, eliminate city managers, and let's just run the city by Survey Monkey? You know, we'll just negotiate, we'll just have everything go to a vote of the people, I mean, it's ridiculous. This contract was negotiated by elected officials. Elected officials that the voters, the people of Oregon City, put their confidence and trust in you. That's, the voters put their confidence in you to make that, these kinds of decisions. This was negotiated, it was done with the help of an HR company, and frankly, I'm embarrassed by what's going on here tonight. To allege wrongdoing, to allege inappropriateness, to allege these kinds of things, to me, is inappropriate, it's frivolous, it's argumentative, it's divisive, and I see no point in it. Yeah, I just, I could speculate as to what the purpose is, but there's something going on here. Something beyond the good, you know, the good intentions that have been stated, there's something going on. And I'm uncomfortable with it. I don't like the confrontational style approach to problems and issues, it's divisive to our city, and that's bad for business. So I'll just say, stop this nonsense and do what you've been asked to do as elected officials, vote your conscience, vote your due diligence, and move on. Let's not make this a three-ring circus. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the order will be, we'll hear from Jim Leffler, our human resource director, then we'll have discussions at the commission level, if, at that point, David Frazier, well, if the attorney feels that he needs to speak at any point, that'll be fine. So I'll probably go Jim Leffler to our attorney, to the commission, and afterwards, if the city manager feels he, he needs to say something, he may do so.
Oops. That's not what I want.
We've seen that, Troy.
Nance?
It's right down there.
Well, no, I was actually looking for the, for Mr. Hunt's.
Okay.
I just wanted to speak to that briefly. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Jim Leffler, Human Resources Director for the Just some, I'm a data-driven decision-maker, so there were some, some errors in the data that I wanted to speak to. Okay, just an update, let me see, the City of Eugene, their salary, excuse me, their salary is 2,014,383 for their city manager, City of Vancouver is 1,95,448, and the city manager, David Frazier's salary, based on the contract, is 163,800, so I'm not sure where that $174,000 figure came from, but there is a, there is a disparity between that. Let's see, that's it for this. This is a, this is a recent compensation study that was conducted in advance of, of David Frazier's evaluation, we do this, well, HR does this periodically, just to compare, in, in advance, again, of the evaluation. We use total compensation versus salary, because that's a better indication for us as far as the, you know, the, how the, how the employees are being compensated. So, in this case, and there's two forms of compensation, cash and noncash, and noncash would be the benefits, you know, other fringe, other fringe benefits that are, we, the city pays for, or the employer pays for, but they're, they're not considered the cash version. The, in the previous slide, they did have the Lake Oswego city manager, however, that salary was for the acting city manager, who, who was, is actually their assistant city manager when he was acting- city manager when he was acting city manager. So that, that was his, in fact, his salary. When the previous city manager from Lake Oswego left and went back down to California, he was making that amount up there that you see before you. So this is in the total cash order from highest paid, or at that point, highest paid to lowest paid, excuse me, not lowest paid. These are comparables for the cities in the area, you know, based on highest paid down to the City of Tigard. I wanted to point out that currently the recruitments for the Clackamas County Administrator end has been extended as the Lake O position is currently being recruited. So both those positions are trying to be, they're trying to fill. What total cash compensation is includes base salary VIBA, which is a variable Employee Benefit Association. It's kind of like an HRA, a health reimbursement account, and CAR, Technology Lounge, which is cellphone, and longevity. And also actually deferred compensation is part of that, too. I didn't put that in there. But deferred compensation is also included in total cash compensation. So currently, the city manager, David Frazier, does not get deferred compensation. He does get PERS. As a reminder, you know, we did meet an executive session twice to discuss the contract and the performance appraisal. Well, we met to talk about benefits is basically what we were talking about, compensation and contract, and the fact that Mr. Frazier is not currently under contract. And the commission approached Mr. Frazier and with my mediation, I guess, to create or to update his employment agreement. A couple of notes to address Mr. Nocita's concerns with 8B. I'd like to point out that 8B, the language in 8B is the same as the existing or the previous employment agreement, which was 4G, of which Commissioner Nocita approved when he was on the agenda, when he was on the commission. And the same as far as the benefits section of 4B. Benefits are paid out as part of severance, and they were part of the original agreement that Mr. Frazier had, that the commission agreed to three years ago. Hours of work, hours of work for management employees are variable. The expectation is that you work until you get the job done. And if Mr. Frazier doesn't get the job done, then I'm sure the commission will have something to say about it as the employer. And as a reminder, the commission is the employer, and, you know, the citizens are not necessarily the employer, but they, you know, you do have to answer to them, as you well know. That's pretty much all I have to say. I'm open to any questions. I can, you know, I can address the dollar figure of the additional compensation that was in the new employment agreements. Any questions for me?
I may have some comments later, but I don't think I have any questions of you. And if I'm making my comments, I might ask you a question. Mr. Sullivan, do you wish to speak to anything?
Just a few things. First of all, this is basically a business decision to be made by the commission. And yes, you can talk about terms, you can talk about salary, you can talk about benefits, but that's your judgment to make. And there's, there's nothing illegal about the contract. If you wanted to change the terms, certainly we could deal with it. Let me call up a couple of things that were said. First of all, the notion of the change comes from a previous contract, previous iteration of this same contract, and has been part, if I remember, of the last five city manager contracts. So, and it says, "If there's a change in the law pertaining to the role, powers, duties, authorities, or responsibilities of the employee's position that substantially changes the form of government," all right, it has to do that, "the employee shall have the right to declare a termination." All right? So it's not just anything that changes, it's not the appointment of the city attorney or anything like that. Another issue is reasonable expenses. Reasonable is really a function of your auditing of the expenses that come before you for payment. So you make that choice. If you want to kick something back, you can do that. But you're the ones that are responsible for paying the bills and the expenses. 4G. The, get the right, the right one. Okay. On the business-related but not required expenses, that could be International City Managers Association, it could be the Lions Club, it could be anything that assists the manager in dealing with his functions. Moonlighting has changed. It was 10 hours in the first agreement that you approved two years ago. It is now, so long as it doesn't interfere with his duties as city manager. Indemnification is a carryover from the previous agreement and under Oregon tort lawyer required, except if the manager does some intentional tort to indemnify him for any undertakings that he did in his official capacity. The heirs stuff is from a previous contract, and it allows, if David should die, it allows his heirs to collect the rest of his salary or make any other adjustments or get his property or what have you. So the original basis for many of these things, as I understand, and again, I didn't draft the agreement, is the International City Managers Association Form Contract, which is used as a basis, not the basis, throughout the state. It's been modified. If you compare the current agreement to the proposed agreement, there are changes. The changes relate to money. They relate to severance. But those, again, if you've looked at them and if you're satisfied with them, as I understand that you were when we were asked to look at the agreement, then you're, you're fine. If you want to change it, we'll help you. But that's, that's where you are.
Thank you. I think I'm going to weigh in first with just a couple of observations I might speak We have seen it in this city, and we could have seen it in this city had the previous city manager gone another year. Decisions and policies are set by the city commission. Frequently, the voters don't care for those. Frequently, there's an overturn in the next election. And very frequently, the result is they fire the city manager. Often times, it happens very early on. There's no opportunity by the city manager to find out, to have the commission find out if they're going to respond to his policy directions or her policy directions of the commission. I think the average life of a city manager in a given city is about five years. I came on to, one of the commissions I was on, as it turned over, within two or three months, the city manager was let go. And those were things that probably emanated, perhaps partially from his conduct, but also because there was going to be directions in the policy of the new commission. No chance was really given to find out whether that city manager was going to in fact effectively operate under those new policies. So the city manager often is the ultimate scapegoat when there's an overturn in the city commission. So it's a chance to gain. That's why you have these opportunities to get compensated beyond the time you serve because during that period of time, that person's going to be looking for another One of the reasons we looked at five years, I think most of us, because I disagree very strongly with Mr. Eckers perception that not enough is being done economically in this city. I think we're far further along in the legacy process, Willamette Falls' legacy process, than we thought we would be at this particular time. It's going to be a long process. I think a lot of us were talking about 10 years. I think we're a lot more optimistic now, assuming that we're going to be able to get some funding support from other entities to push this on. But it requires, in my opinion, some consistency in the management of the city to push this along. David Frazier's done a great job in this regard and his supporting staff. We wouldn't be at this point if it weren't for his activities. So I think almost all of us regard the Willamette Falls' legacy, that's the Blue Heron site, to be probably the greatest economic opportunity that we currently have and that we're operating on. We want to see that the partners that we have feel that they have a reliable partner in us. And as long as David Frazier is moving the direction he is, I think the indication is, in fact, the strong indication is that the perception of our partners is that the Oregon City is doing an excellent job in legacy project. I happen to know for a fact that there are other entities looking for managers, government managers, who have approached David Frazier. Many of these things we put in here were really incentives to keep him, to make it so he won't look for something else during this five-year period. Those things can change, and there's a risk that we take. I don't think we've made a mistake in our evaluation. Anybody else want to speak to this? I'll get, I'll get it on the floor. That's me. That's Commissioner Smith.
I'm not you.
No, 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 no. You're not me. Nobody confuses us, actually.
But I do agree with you. And I think you stated exactly what I want to say quite well, but I will add to it. I was going to comment on the same comment about economic growth, not the illusion that we're not advancing as a city. I think if you believe that, especially in the last year, I don't know what you're looking at. We are advancing, even I think in the last few months. And I think the Blue Heron project is a great example of that. So that was a major component of, for me, the decision-making. One, very few things that happen in this city happen within a year, within two years, within six years, within 10 years. And a lot of those, a lot of these big projects, you can point out, you know, the library or any other project, these go on for years. And they require some stability within the city. We're changing over to a two-year budget cycle, so we have to count for that as well. I think all those factors played into the discussion of the contract and the length of it. I'm perfectly fine with where we settled on that at this point. I don't have an issue with that. I think we see that projects like the Blue Heron site, other things, aren't going to be done in a year. They're not going to be done in a couple of years. We need that five years to follow through and be consistent with the way we've been for the last year and what we're doing as a city. And so I think that's crucial. I think our, the numbers that we've been looking at is what led us to the salary that we talked about. And I think although it is on the upper end maybe of some of our neighboring cities, we want to make sure we keep our city manager here and working on the work that he's doing. And so I think everything that the mayor said, I think, is pretty accurate. I had no problem pulling it off the consent agenda. I don't think it should go on the consent agenda. I think it is something that citizens should make comments about and should be talking about. And, you know, I think there were some good points brought up about some of the sections. So if I had any concern, it might have been addressing some of those issues, not the issue in terms of the salary or the contract length. I feel confident in our city attorney's answers to most of the responses to the contract. Some of them, as we heard, have been there for the last several contracts. And so I'll listen to the rest of the discussion and see where that takes us to a decision. But I feel fairly confident in what we're doing.
Mr. Pauli.
Yes, I think most people believe that decision should be made not just on opinion but also on facts. So I think the chart of the compensation is interesting. I have a different chart that I'm looking at, and there's three of the, four of the salaries that are understated from other cities. And the one that is overstated, of course, is the one from our city. So I look at that into consideration. And it's a pretty standard contract, except for in the contract, it has a pay freeze for five years. That's not standard. That's a better deal for us. No car is provided, and it's nine months severance instead of a standard 12. And do we want a manager who is at the starting salary range? That's another question. And it's important to build consistency and trust in our citizens and partners also. And as far as roles and processes, we did the review. We took a lot of time doing the review. We did a detailed study of it, asked a lot of hard questions, and collectively, with all of our different opinions, we came to an agreement. And I really respect and appreciate all of the citizen input that you have made tonight. But we've seen a lot of information, and we've gone over it with a fine-tooth comb. Thank you.
Commissioner Roth.
Okay. Break the mold here. Well, I did have some problems with the compensation and, with the contract, excuse me. And I would say, given that we're looking at, Betty and I have been charged with rewriting the charter, which addresses one of the sections of the contract, and that our current charter states that the commission will set salaries. I don't know if anybody's read that. This commission does not set salaries, but that isn't our charter. Given that and that there's a substantial public concern, and also I don't, well, most of you know that I'm unemployed, and I don't believe in compensating someone for a volatile position. There are no guarantees in this world, no matter what you do. So saying that we're compensating because the job could be, you could be let go at any time, doesn't hold any water with me. So I would ask that we have this as a continuance for public input.
Commissioner Mum.
Good comments by everybody. As you know, I love a spirited conversation, as long as it's based on facts. So just a couple of comments. I personally don't see that the CIC, along with any other citizen within our community, has any more standing than any other. Everybody has seen this. It's been posted. It's been online. It's been talked about. It was coming, and people knew it was coming. Contracts were ending. It was coming. I don't think we need to postpone it personally. But that's just my own personal opinion. And as has been alluded to, a lot of this went on in exec session. So a lot of comments cannot be brought forward because of that. And also, in exec session, we all agreed that we would stand together in front of the public and agreed to this. So I'm going to leave it at that and make no more comments.
Commissioner Roth, again.
Yes, I want to address the standing together. We agreed in commission, or in executive session, to stand together. However, there's been a lot of new information brought here by the public. And when I look at this from a different point of view, the commission was- was not represented in negotiation. We represented ourselves. And that's something I hadn't considered before. So, that's it.
I'm going to make a couple of comments. The frozen salary, I don't want anybody to get a confused thing. We're giving the same kind of cost of living adjustments that we do with all of our, with all of our staff. Yeah, do you want to speak to this?
Actually, yes, Your Honor. Just as far as the commission's setting salaries, actually, they do. They set salaries when they approve collective bargaining agreements. And also, each June prior to the start of the fiscal year, they, I bring forward the, for the management and confidential supervisory, the cost of living increases. So those salaries are, in fact, set by the commission and approved by the commission before we can even pay after July 1st. And the initial classification compensation study back in 2004 was, in fact, approved by the commission. That set the initial salary ranges that we're still operating under today, with the exception of cost of living increases.
But those salaries are set previous to us negotiating contracts. So we don't have that information together.
I'm not following your question.
If you're saying you bring them forward in June, or did you say July 1st, whatever?
Well, I bring them forward when the, when the collective bargaining agreements are, reach tentative agreement, I bring forward in executive session the tentative agreement with the cost of the, of the new contract. And then the commission will take a look at it and hopefully reach consensus for ratification in executive session. And then we bring it before the public for approval, you know, for ratification, for commission approval. So that, we haven't, we haven't hit that process yet, but we hope to hit it here with the police shortly.
Let me, let me continue with my comments. We also give merit pay. This is done on an annual basis. This is done by the city manager for management staff under him. We do it for him as well. This is quite different than what happens with the union employees. They, they have the cost of living, but they have step opportunities. And when they increase a step, their cost of living applies to a higher salary at that point with the step. That does not exist for the city manager. We have the COLAs, and then we make a decision as to whether to give the city manager merit pay. I think, believe it changed last year from what it was the year before. We make our decisions on an annual basis. And I disagree with Commissioner Roth's assessment as a commission. There was a lot of dialogue on these, there were actually two major areas in which we didn't agree. And in terms of the dialogue, higher ends came down and lower ends came up. It becomes a decision of the commission at this point. But to say it was individual, the fact of the matter is, there was a great deal of discussion that happened in the executive session. I'm not at liberty to say what that is. But this was the consensus that was brought forward before us to bring this forward. So the individual commissioners had opportunity to discuss things, and there was a consensus arrived by the commission, not a decision, but a consensus, as to bringing this forward. This is the point at which the commission makes its decision.
May I answer that?
You may respond to it, yes.
My point wasn't that we made an agreement to bring this forward as a consensus. My point was, there have been a lot of new points presented tonight that we didn't have in that discussion that bear on the decision at this point.
Okay. Commissioner Mumm.
I just have two more comments. First of all, we are also citizens of Oregon City, so we do also understand and appreciate our citizens and what they do for us, and all the different committees that they serve on. But we also volunteer our time up here. So we would hope that you would appreciate that. The other comment I have to say is, PERS reform is a huge issue in Salem, and I agree it needs to be resolved. But it's beyond us to resolve it here. And we have more, more union contracts coming up, so I hope to see you all here with your comments.
Just a, just a question if I may have on the PERS. Is our city manager tier three or tier two?
It's the OPERC, which is actually the tier three, the lowest level.
So when they're talking about PERS reform in Salem, they're not talking about his PERS.
No, they're talking about one and two.
These are, these are employees that came on years and years and years ago. So to have somebody coming up and say, and he's getting the PERS too. He's not getting the PERS that people that were working here for the city 15 years ago did. He's not guaranteed 8%. I don't know if he has any guarantee on percent at all. So the PERS, the PERS issue is not really an issue for him. I guess the concerns that were expressed here, I think, have been pretty well addressed by Jim Lefler and have been addressed by our attorney. If somebody wants to put forward a motion either to continue this or to go ahead and approve the employment agreement, this is the time to do so.
Mr. Mayor, may I respond to the claim that I?
You may not respond. This is the end of the public comment.
I did not overstate the salary. It was explained on the exhibit that it included the incentive.
Call for the question, please.
Just a minute. First of all, those weren't your figures, so I don't think you're in a position to defend them.
I am in a position to defend them. It was explained to me.
But anyway.
It was stated on the exhibit.
You're out of order. You're out of order.
Well, I'm not going to be accused of overstating things when I didn't.
I've been accused of several things many times. Doesn't, I just let it roll off.
You have every opportunity to respond, because you hold the gall.
Okay, you've responded.
Thank you.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve.
I hear a second.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Polly and seconded by Commissioner Mumm. Vote, please. Four in favor and one opposed. We have one more item, do we not?
Consent agenda. Move to approve.
Seven C.
Oh, seven C was also polled.
Yeah, there's two items polled.
Activity, racketeering, discuss all of that.
You provided no evidence, of course, but that's all right. Which one, seven?
C.
C. We're going to seven C. I presume I'm going to go back to Jim Lefler again on this one? Or do I?
Well, I really don't have much to say, Your Honor. The commission met again in executive session for the performance evaluation. I was there to answer questions as necessary. And actually, my, pretty much my role was just to create the commission report and bring it forward for the commission to consider and vote on.
I've got four speakers lined up here. David Perdoo and Paul Edgar.
Michael passing.
You're passing? I don't see David Perdoo here.
David Perdoo.
Michael Berman, William, David Perdoo is in the back. Do you want to speak?
No, I spoke about the issue.
Okay. Michael Berman and William Gifford.
Recall the hall. Recall the hall.
Well, you won't recall one of them, I'm sure. Anyway, with that, I guess these are maybe holdovers from the comments.
Shepherd.
Well, he's not on the list.
There's no more forms.
Here you go.
In any case, Michael Berman and David Perdoo and somebody else has withdrawn. And William Gifford, he's gone. Okay. With that, we'll call forward.
I think Michael Berman, weren't you going to speak?
He shook his head.
Jim, you want to speak to this one?
Yeah.
Okay. And we have Mr. Nocida.
Commissioner, Commissioner C. Come forward. Range the seat, I'm sorry.
I just want to take the opportunity to briefly respond to Mr. Lefler on my point about the provision being in the prior contract. It was, and I knew it was when I made the comment. My point was that it was a quantitatively different situation now than it was in the original contract, because there are so many, there's, when you do it with a six-month severance pay, as it was in the original contract, and the two-year contract, compared to now, when you have a five-year contract with all of these additional costs that constitutes benefits, including the retention bonus, then there's a quantitative difference between the costs to the citizens under the first contract and under this contract. And that's all.
With that, I will permit Kevin Hunt to come forward and put his argument here on the record.
It's a very simple point. If you read the exhibit, you saw that in the introduction, it stated what the basis was for that figure. And so for someone to come in here and highlight that I have overstated the salary is irresponsible, especially when that is the person who apparently negotiated this matter. All they had to do is read the exhibit and see what that figure was based on. Thank you.
Yeah. There seems to be no comment on the other item that's been polled. Do I have a motion?
Does Commissioner Roth want to speak to it?
No, I want to move.
Okay, Commissioner Roth moves to approve.
I'll second.
Second. Commissioner Mumm seconds. Votes?
I'm saying, just close.
That was unanimous vote in favor. With that, do I have a motion on the consent agenda, please?
Move to first.
Second.
You guys are too fast for me.
Commissioner Mumm moved, and Commissioner Smith, and we'll have the vote. Unanimous? And I think we are going to the city manager's report, probably. I never gave you a chance to comment, but you probably feel no need to.
No, thank you, Your Honor. Just one thing. I think that boilerplate language about moonlighting, it's kind of funny. It's in all the city manager contracts I've seen, but I've never done it because I've never had time. And with the baby a few weeks away, I don't think I'm going to have any more time. So I don't think I'll be doing that. Nevertheless, I have a lot to report tonight, so let me get started. First, Mr. Edgar tonight suggested that the city manager be a cheerleader for the city, and I think that's an important job. I try to do that when I can. I don't think it's as important that I do it as it is that somebody is doing it, because I really do believe that it's amazing what we can achieve as a city if we don't care who gets the credit. And city managers, historically, have been trained, and this includes me, I'm trying to get over this a little bit, to do our best work, stay in the background, and make sure somebody else, preferably you all, receive the credit for the achievements of the city. But tonight, I'd like, I'm happy to report that our Oregon City Public Works Department has won yet another award for the jug handle, and this time it's a really big one. It's the National Public Works Association Award that's going to be given out in Chicago later this year for the category, I believe it's 20 to 50 million. Is that the?
Five to 25.
Five to 25 million. And so that's for a national competition. It's highly competitive, and I'm just really, really proud of Nancy Crushhour and John and Alita and the entire team and our consultants that worked on the project. So we will be in Chicago cheerleading for our city.
I want to, I want to thank the, I think Alita was the head person on that. Did a tremendous job. I had opportunities to talk to her on several occasions as that went forward. And of course, that was great support from all of the, all the management staff and everybody involved. I've never seen such a, such a great public involvement piece. I saw the emails going in, in terms of recommendations and so forth. And I forget, I forget whom we hired, but whoever was doing that, they were not boilerplate answers to those questions. They were specific to the questions. Many of them were recommendations, and several of those recommendations were actually carried out. It was a tremendous public input program, and I wouldn't be surprised if that wasn't one of the reasons that we, in fact, got this award.
They also got an award for that particular, specific.
That is correct. That is correct.
Yeah. I guess the other thing is, there was, there was a lot of people involved besides staff. That was a huge effort on behalf of the city commission and past city commissions and other elected officials, so.
And we will be reminding ODOT and other granting authorities of our success on the project and how it was managed when we asked for money in the future. So I think that's really going to earn, earn points for us. Next, I also want to report that I received a call from County Commissioner and Chair John Ludlow this week. And Mr. Ludlow wanted to have my advice on hosting a, kind of a staff-level working meeting here about downtown parking opportunities around the courthouse. So I'm really encouraged by that. Our first meeting, we don't have it scheduled yet, but we're going to be working on that. And I did suggest to him that we probably need two meetings. One is sort of a staff-level planning meeting that I hope the county will bring their facilities people to that meeting. We're just going to be making suggestions to them. But I think it's really great that the relationship has improved so much, to the extent that they're calling us, asking us to sit down with them and participate. Now, I don't think, it also has gone unnoticed that we did pledge up to, up to a match of $300,000, depending on the kind of project that they would design to improve parking at the courthouse. So hope to have more on that after our meeting with them. Probably be more than one meeting, because it's not, if the Gordian knot of Oregon City parking could have been solved by now, completely solved, I think we would have done it already. So it's going to be a challenge, and it's going to be some money that has to be expended, particularly on the part of the county, to correct it. But they do seem to be listening, and I think that's just wonderful. Also, I believe Eric is here tonight.
Eric, did you want to say anything about the murals in Oregon City?
It was requested by the commission to discuss the murals in Oregon City, and I think we were thinking it was best to address that during the sign code, the discussion of the sign code revisions. So that's when we'll be addressing that, just kind of meshing that in with the same discussion, so.
When is that discussion? Do we know?
We've, we advertised the RFP for the sign code work that we, that's been in the budget, so we've narrowed it down to one. We're negotiating that contract right now. As soon as we have that contract negotiated, we'll bring that forward for approval and then start that process.
Thank you. Next, we've received a request from one of our Native American tribes that has an annual, I don't know if it's annual, but it sounds like a very compelling and important event for them culturally, and a request for us to provide some area for them to spend the night on their canoe. It's a canoe journey, actually, up the Willamette. And we did have some conflicts with some of our festival dates and park usage. And then we have a challenge in the ordinance, because the language is written such that we're not supposed to have overnight camping there, but it does give the city manager some discretion. The discretion of which I am asking the commission to affirm, so that I can have the discretion to allow them to do this, is essentially what I'm, what I'm asking for. Scott Archer, I think, has more information, if you'd like any of that on the details. Scott?
Would you like any more questions?
Didn't you send us a couple of emails?
Yeah, yeah, there were some emails. It's, this is in relation to that.
Yeah.
What do we need to do, Ed?
Look, I don't think you can square this circle. I'll be very frank with you. There is a provision in the code that prevents it, but gives an immunity to accidental type of approval.
Accidental.
This is, this is not anything along those lines. If you're going to do this, I recommend that you change the code.
Yeah.
And we can bring you an amendment to the code. The problem, and I want, I'm looking you all in the eye right now, is that when you grant one group, then you can't distinguish on the basis of who they are.
That's right. It's a slippery slope.
That is the, that's the problem. If you want me to work on it, I'd be glad to do it.
Can I ask a question? We have the Motor Hollow Park. Yeah. What, why are we letting people park there?
It's a city, it's not a city park. It's.
Well, it is. It's.
Yes, it is.
That was, because that's.
Excluded that.
Yeah, that's defined, and it's, yeah, essentially is excluded for vehicular camping. There used to be camping, tent camping.
Canoes and vehicles.
Adjacent to the.
There we go.
If you want us to wink, that's fine. I want you to do this consciously, is what I'm telling you.
Yes.
So I'll do what you want.
Because it opens the door to a lot of others. So we can't just specify in code that it's for the tribes for certain.
Then what happens when the? Then what happens when the neo-Nazi group wants to come in?
I guess one, if it is in fact from the, one of the recognized tribal groups, it could be done for government entities. Ed, give him one of those looks.
I don't know.
You've still got to change the ordinance. If you want us to work on it, we'll do that.
They're not government entities. They're separate government.
RV park?
Well, excuse me, I should have said that. No, 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 that's what I intended to say. That's what I intended to say.
Commissioner, do you, I'm seeing Mr. Smith.
I'm not sure how to say this, because this has happened before, and it happens all the time. And I think of the end of the Oregon Trail Interpreter Center, with multiple encampments that have happened year after years, when people camping overnight, Boy Scout, Girl Scout groups camping overnight at the Interpreter, at the Interpreter Center, which is a city park. Events that happen in Clackamake Park, such as carnivals, for instance, where the carnival workers are sleeping over in the park, which is happening tonight, tomorrow night, et cetera. I'd hate, I mean, not, that's an excuse, but this is something that's happening on an old basis, which means we need to change the code.
The ordinance is also relatively recent.
Right.
We should, it appears that we should change the ordinance.
Right.
Do you want us to come back with some recommendations?
I think we need, come forward, that's fine.
Are you sleeping there tonight?
I am not sleeping in the park tonight.
There is maritime law, there is a maritime law on navigable waters, that there's a safe harbor law. It's international. And you might invoke something like that.
Maybe, because it wouldn't be the park land. It could be in the water. But would they sleep in the water, in the boats in the water?
Does the Commission, is there consensus that we should do our best to solve the problem?
Solve the problem, and we already have.
Maritime law works.
We'll see if the canoe can fit the definition of RV and other options.
But what is the timing of that?
July 21st.
Oh, okay.
July 21st.
We don't have a lot of time, but we'll get cracking on it.
And Scott, I really want to thank you for working on this. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, I think the intent clearly is that the no camping rule is so that there's not just tents all over the place.
Right.
You know, that unlimited basis, that things like this probably do happen and have happened. And I think we just need to clean things up a little bit with our language.
I can tell you one thing. We have people sleeping in Waterboard Park every night.
Yeah.
Yep.
Not supposed to be.
That's true, too.
Wow. There's a few parks they sleep in.
May I continue? Okay. So our next, the next thing I want to remind Commissioners of is it's your work session coming up on May 7th. You're going to be talking about the end of the Oregon Trail. And I know that all of you have been, I believe all of you have been invited on tours down there. And I went down there the other day with Scott Archer to take a tour myself, so I could be better prepared for the work session on the 7th. So I would really like to encourage all of you to go, so that when we have the work session, you'll sort of have a context in which to think about the site. So if you can make arrangements to get your tour before the 7th, that would be great. And then, last but not least, earlier today, and you haven't had, I know many of you, time to check your emails lately, but earlier today, I sent out a draft MOU regarding the Willamette Falls Legacy Project. And the language in the MOU is, well, it essentially mirrors the language of the four virtues that you've defined in the past. And recently, we had a little quibble here about using the phrase cultural, historic and cultural interpretation versus historic preservation. And I have heard back from Commissioner Roth, the suggestion that we use the preservation word. That's not what the partners have proposed, and that's not the action the Commission took last time. But I do want to make sure that there is a consensus among all of you, or a chance to discuss it, so that.
My discussion, my, a question is, did we write this MOU, or was this a group effort?
It was a group effort.
Okay.
Yeah. And Metro's attorneys, though, I mean, no offense, Ed, but they work cheaper than Ed does, and so we.
We use them when we can.
Someone else is.
He's not sure about that. Maybe he's right. But they do, their attorney reviewed it. We have not had Ed review it, but before it actually became an MOU, we would do that. But I just want to make sure that the Commission, that there wasn't a change, because you, you know, you made that suggestion to me in email. I just want to make sure that you weigh in with the other Commission members, and I get some direction from you all.
No, it's fine.
It's okay.
Yeah, I just, I thought it was something that we had.
Yeah, yeah.
Originated here.
Right. Okay, let's see here.
Portland Rail.
Oh, yeah. You're on for the Portland Passenger Rail.
So I've been the staff, kind of assigned to track this Oregon Passenger Rail program. There's several different routes that are being considered to get passenger rail service from Eugene to Portland, actually, and beyond, all the way to Canada. But Governor's pushed forward an initiative that's pretty big, and there's been a lot of, there's a community forum that I think, I know the mayor's been to at least a couple of those meetings. We've been tracking those as well. And they continue to move through the process of trying to refine these routes and come to a decision as to what's the best route for this rail. And for Oregon City, there's two routes that are proposed. One is the current Union Pacific Route, and then there's another route that comes down 205 and crosses Willamette River, and then essentially aligns with, I believe it aligns, the detailed mapping on this is still a little foggy, but it looks like it comes across and aligns pretty closely with the current Union Pacific Rail there near Amtrak Station. So those are, I mean, that's for Oregon City, but these routes, there's like five of them, and they're looking at them all pretty closely and trying to, you know, so they're going through this refinement process. And I think, you know, this whole, this whole effort is just kind of recognizing that over the next 25 years, there's going to be a stronger need for passenger rail, for economic development along all, you know, all pieces of that alignment. So it's pretty important stuff. So far, they've had six open houses. There's another one that's coming, that they're not exactly calling an open house. They're calling it the Southeast Metro Community Advisory Group Meeting. And that's going to be at the, at your Pioneer Center, right here at 615 Fifth Street, on May 7th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And really, the core reform group, which is really comprised of local agencies, both electeds and staff, they've identified several goals, seven goals, actually, that they are looking for feedback on. And so I'll just go through those goals real quickly. Goal number one is to improve passenger rail mobility and accessibility to communities in the Willamette Valley, protect freight rail capacity and investments in the corridor, and maintain safety. Plan, design, and implement, maintain, and operate a cost-effective project. Provide an affordable and equitable travel alternative. Be compatible with passenger rail investments planned in Washington State. Promote community health and quality of life for communities along the corridor. Protect and preserve the natural and built environment. So those are their seven goals. They're trying to get feedback, try to prioritize those. That meeting on May 7th is just one of those opportunities.
And what time was the meeting on May 7?
From 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Okay, we have a Commission work session on May 7th. So maybe the mayor could write a letter and submit it, or?
There's others. There's, although that's the Southeast Metro CAG meeting, what I could do is see if there's an opportunity for them to figure out a better way of getting feedback from the Commission.
Is this like the one that we had here earlier with the railroad people?
Getting more refined.
Oh, it's the same project?
Same group, same project, yes. The other thing that I wanted to say is the routes and the information that I've just gone over, we've posted to the website, so it's now new, it's right on the web, on our website, with a link to the Oregon Passenger Rail as a new news article. So you'll see this information that I've gone over in more detail.
I'm going to make a suggestion, if the Commission agrees to it. We have our study session, and then we could take an hour break or something and go over there, and then go back to our work session.
Oh, that's a good idea. So is our work session a joint with somebody?
No, next week.
No, okay, okay.
So, so see if we can work around that a little bit. We can come in there?
Nancy, is that doable?
Maybe even a.
We have three very heavy items on that are almost 45 minutes each, and then plus the TSP. So you're going to be in session for a long time. I'm not, it's up to you, but just so you know.
Let's see if there's a solution that maybe the forum can bring that would be a little more, I mean, there are two significant routes right through Oregon City, so maybe there's a way to get them to do you a private showing.
Just as long as they both come by the station.
Well, that's why I thought, you know, if there was a letter, we would all probably support a letter that the mayor signed.
I think it's a little early for that. I think this is, but I'll work on an opportunity.
Can I take one of my items and chime in right at this time, because it's relevant? First of all, we, my apologies, we did not do anything for National Train Day, which is May 7th. Is that right, I believe?
I think it's the 11th.
Just a moment here. Supposed to have that someplace.
May 11th.
No, that's, that's something else. But in any case, we did have a national, what was the date? Did you catch?
May 11th?
May 11th. We did have, it's National Train Day. But there is a, the Amtrak has got a Great American Stations Civic Improvement Stations Conversation coming up on June, June 5th. The reservations, and I got the invitation, it's to me, but I imagine other people could participate. I've gone ahead and registered, but you can RSVP, if anybody wants to write it down, it's easy. GreatAmericanStations@amtrak.com. There'll be people coming from the various stations that are served by the two, the two, Coast Starlight and Cascade, coming from, coming up this way or down this way, depending on how you look at it, and also the route that goes up the Columbia River. So there'll be people participating from various communities that have train stations. They have a roster of individuals who will be speaking on various pieces. I'll be willing to share that with you, pass it on to Nancy, if people want to get a copy of this. So that's something that's coming up. And it may well be some of the discussions we're having here has the possibility of feeding into this dialogue.
I guess one thing I'll read, the public, for this meeting on the 7th, it says, "The public is invited to attend these meetings and provide input. In particular, Oregon City residents, business owners, and other interested parties are encouraged to attend the Oregon City meeting, participate in the process, and help shape the future of Oregon Passenger Rail."
Further, Your Honor?
Nothing further. Well, we did have, we did have our cleanup. We go from last Saturday. There were a lot of people that came out. I don't know how many sites, but I saw some of them. Airlong Singer, Singer Falls area, a tremendous cleanup, plantings in other areas, work in parkways, and I'm sure there are various other activities that were going on. Participation among individuals and groups. I think it was a very successful, successful program. The other thing I wanted to mention was the one that I just did, this Amtrak conversation, community conversation, although it looks like it's mostly the presentation of papers and so forth. But I encourage anybody that is interested in this to be informed and go through the process. With that, on the floor from anybody else. Commissioner Smith? Well, actually, Commissioner Polly, since she pushed the button first.
No, no, no.
Yeah, yeah, she pushed the button first.
Look at the agenda item.
No, go ahead.
She's under City Manager, and I'm under Commission.
I'm looking at it on the floor. Well, now she, now she withdrew, and Commissioner Smith came on. Now, Commissioner Polly, do you want to be up there eventually?
Yeah, and I didn't.
Okay, well, Commissioner.
I didn't.
Commissioner Polly has yielded to Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
All right. Pioneer Family Festival starts Friday, and so I want to talk about that for a second. This is our, well, depends on how you look at it. I've done the festival down Clackamake Park for, I think, 16 years. And, well, 16 or 17 years. The parade, it's 15th year. So, but I'm tired. But it's going to be a good weekend, and 86 degrees, maybe a little too warm for a festival weekend, but I think it'll be good. A lot of people, I'm assuming, will be down at the river and down at Clackamake Park. And so I wanted to just make a couple reminders. The festival opens Clackamake Park 2:00 on Friday and goes till 10:00 Friday night. Saturday, the festival's open from 11:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night, and 11:00 to 7:00 on Sunday. We have several, you know, big events that happen as part of that weekend. Saturday morning, 10:30 Main Street is the Oregon City Teddy Bear Parade. And that is an event that collects a lot of thousands, really, teddy bears to then distribute through the police department, hospitals, shelters, et cetera. And so that's been an annual tradition in Oregon City. On Saturday, right kind of as the parade is hitting the park, the Oregon City Skateboard Competition will take place. I think that's going on its 10th year about, somewhere around there. And then Sunday at noon is the BMX Competition, which is going on, I think it's sixth or eighth year. I lose count, because they all start at different times. So somewhere around there. And if you've been by the park, and there is, the setup's beginning, I'm going to go down there after the meeting and make sure everything's going okay. But I'll be down at the park through the weekend. And I just wanted to pre-thank a lot of the departments already. I will thank them again afterwards. But I wanted to let Scott know that the Park Department is just incredible, and Larry is amazing. It might help a bit that he's also a member of the Optimist Club, which puts on the festival. But, you know, I, we don't ask anything from the city that's very specific of that park, other than letting us use the park. And I went down there on, I don't know, Wednesday, today's Wednesday. I went down there yesterday. I'm losing track of the days. The park was being mowed. You know, I remember in past years going down there and seeing them, you know, clean the streets. I went down, and all the picnic tables were barricaded, and I couldn't figure out why will they repaint it, all the picnic tables in the park. Knowing that this is going to be a big weekend, and knowing that a lot of people are going to use the park, and it's going to be nice, and I just appreciate that. It's a lot of effort that I think is just coincidentally with the festival, but also just knowing the park is going to be used so big this weekend. But I just really appreciate that. Police Department is going to be highly involved, as they always are, in the parade on Saturday morning. Public Works dealing with all the street closures and all of the permits that I went through to get that done. And so I really appreciate all that work, and it's been, you know, ongoing for a long time in this city. And thankfully, for my sanity, kind of just happens. It just, it, you know, a lot of this, well, I won't say a lot of the stress is gone. Every year, it's still there. But it's, it's nice to know that those things kind of happen just as they go, and people are used to kind of it, and are expecting it. And I know that it's all going to happen. So I hope to see everyone down there. If you get a chance to come down to the festival, you can still participate in the parade. If you haven't got an application in, you can be at the parade at 9:00 in the morning is when we start registration at Liberty, around Liberty Plaza. And then the parade starts at 10:30, so people can still participate. We're actually still not turning away vendors from the park, so if people are still interested in that, they can contact me. And by contacting me, I mean, drive down to Clackamake Park and find me. And that's it. Thank you so much, and I hope I see you down. find me. And that's it. Thank you so much, and I hope I see you down there.
Well, thank you, Rocky, for spending all those years of working on this project. You may recall that I think you sought money from one, a couple of years from one of the, one of the programs. And I, I recall scrutinizing it very, very hard, and I think I really irritated you, and I had my doubts whether it was gonna be a successful program. But you, what, said what, the 16th year?
Yeah. I think it, I, I don't know, well, I guess the Antique Lot Fair's been running longer, but it's, it's, you know, events, there's been a lot of events in Oregon City, and a lot of variations of a lot of events that come and go, and recreated. And, and this is, you know, well, definitely the longest three-day event, second to probably the River Fest, which was, was kind of a long time ago.
Yeah.
But, yeah, it's, it's, it's a, it's a good event, and it'll be fun.
Yes, thank you very much. Commissioner Pauli?
Yeah, that's a great event. Thanks for all your work, Rocky, and everybody else involved. It's great for families, and it has so many different activities. Last night, I went to the McLaughlin Boulevard Design Open House, and there were quite a few people there. There could always be more people there.
Yes.
Please come, if you're listening to this. I just want to encourage everybody to get involved and seize the opportunity to come to meetings, and come to boards and commission. And public involvement is so important before the decisions are made. So come, get involved. When I was at the Design Open House, there was somebody making a comment. I'm like, write it down and put it in the box. Put it in the comment box. We want all those comments. But it was nice, it was neat to see the renderings and the public input that was given before the, you know, you could tell that they came out in those renderings. So to now fine tune it is gonna be really interesting to see the whole process.
Commissioner Ralph?
Okay. Did I miss a part where we asked for things to be put on future agenda, or is that some other time?
That's on a work session.
Okay. Well, I missed it then. Okay. I wanted to also know about, there's an award in the back with John Lewis's name on it. In the corner, and it's got antlers on it, and all kinds of.
Maybe you should bring it up. Yeah. We'll be wheeling out here. Yeah, you call that an award. It's a, it is an award through the American Public Works Association, so they give it out every six months. It's really a fundraiser, and you can pay to, you can buy your way out of getting it sometimes.
Sounds like, yeah.
Or, you know, you hope that your friends will help you, but apparently I don't have very, I either don't have very many or very wealthy friends, so. So anyway, I, I, we raised, I think, $2,500 or close to it. I didn't hear the final amount, but for the scholarship fund for American Public Works. And I think over the years of that, that's called the Gizmo, and it's, it's also called the Golden Knuckle Award, because it's really heavy. If you try to move it, it's a.
Well, Eric is about to find out, because he wants to, he's going to try to move it in here.
It's pretty impressive.
I hope not. It's breakable. But anyway, it's, yeah, it's pretty, it's kind of, it's kind of a unique thing. You can only win it once, and it's supposed to stay at the agency for the six months, and then it goes on to a different award winner. So thanks for bringing that up.
At least it wasn't.
Uh-oh, he couldn't lift, he couldn't.
He was trying to move it.
It's, it's kind of like a funny tricycle with antlers and all other kinds of things on it.
Yeah, well, oh, there's another component, which, you know, I'm welcome to, for suggestions, but we're supposed to add something to it at the end of our, so.
A rusty pipe would be appropriate.
Is this, is this specifically Oregon transportation, though?
No.
Being a tricycle? No, it's not. Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner Ralph?
No.
Okay. And with that, I see nothing else.